The regular meeting of the Lansing City Council for Monday, October 26th. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
I'm Councilmember Bets.
I am here from Lansing, Michigan remotely.
Uh, Councilmember Dunbar.
I'm here from Port Austin, Michigan remotely.
Um, Councilmember Garza.
I'm here participating virtually from Lansing, Michigan.
Uh, Councilmember Hussein.
I am here as well, uh, participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Jackson.
President participating remotely from the Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Spadefor.
I am, uh, present participating remotely from the only city in Michigan that matters, Lansing.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Good Lord, I'm just here, Patricia Spitzley, meeting virtually from Lansing, Michigan. You guys.
Um, and Councilmember Wood.
I am here participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Okay, there are eight members present, a quorum. Um, we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Is there anybody that members of the council wish that we would keep in our, um, our, yes, Councilmember Spitzley then would?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, for the third time this year, please keep the community of Pensacola, Florida in your prayers as another hurricane seems to be barreling down on them. Just as once again, we're trying to leave to go down there next week. So third time's the charm to go check on our place down there. But just keep those families, um, you know, with COVID and hurricanes and all that other stuff. They've been beat up down there. So keep them in your prayers and keep us in your traveling graces as we go down there.
Thank you, Councilmembers. Uh, Spitzley, Councilmember Wood.
Thank you. If we could remember, uh, the Bibbs family, Martha Bibbs, um, passed away last week. Some of you might know Coach Bibbs, it's, uh, his wife, uh, had was a leader in our community for a number of years and will be sorely missed by many of us. So if we could remember her family, we would appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. And then I would like to take a point for the chair, if I may. And ask that we remember Al Wallace and his family. Um, Al was a lawyer at Miller Canfield here in the Lansing office. Um, he passed away from cancer at the age of forty, leaving behind his children, uh, his three children and his wife. Um, he was just a great, great guy, wonderful attorney. He was instrumental in assisting, uh, the Lansing School District a number of ways through our bond passage. He did some work, I believe, here for the city as well. I know the mayor knew him pretty well and just a tragic loss for, for, um, legal community here in Lansing, but also for those that knew him. So if you could keep Al and his family in your thoughts as well, I'd appreciate it. All right, um, we'll go ahead and take a moment. Thank you all very much. The Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do not have proceedings for approval tonight and I'm not aware, I don't believe we have any late items, so we are too.
We, we actually do, I believe.
Oh, we do have late items.
Yeah. So I would move, uh, President Spadefor for the suspension of Rule Nine to allow for the consideration of late items. In this case, uh, we are dealing with an amendment to, uh, the emergency ordinance that we will be voting on later tonight. Uh, it would be an amendment to Chapter six zero two, section six zero two point one one, to prevent disease, prolong life and promote public health by providing enforcement of local health orders or regulations issued pursuant to the Michigan Public Health, uh, code. Uh, we will have the city attorney, uh, discuss the changes, um, although minor, they are important, um, when we come to that as part of tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Before I take that, it's, as it is an amendment to something that's properly before us, does that need to be a later?
No.
Okay.
Oh, okay, I thought it did.
So I will, uh, I will assume that that was, uh, that my motion has been withdrawn. Thank you though for, uh.
Thank you, Council, uh, President Spadefor.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk.
Okay, comments by Councilmembers on the city clerk.
Are there councilmembers who wish to make comments this evening? I see councils members, councilmembers Spitzley and Bets so far. Councilmember Spitzley, you have the floor.
Um, couple of things. One is a question that we can maybe address, um, later, um, address the, uh, Lansing State Journal article that came out earlier today regarding, um, uh, lawsuit against the city of Lansing regarding a death in, um, the jail. Um, I don't know if we, I, I, I'm not quite sure how, what happened, um, but, um, and or whether the city knew about it. It was just a little disconcerting as a council member to get it as an LSJ, um, bulletin versus being briefed on it by, um, city officials. So if, if, whenever it's appropriate, if we can get an update on what that is, I think it's called the I can't breathe, um, lawsuit. So that's my first thing. So.
Yes.
My second thing is, um, I wanted to give a shout out to, um, Sheriff Rigglesworth. My son and I were at the Ingham County Jail in Mason for totally legitimate legal reasons. Um, but they're open. Um, I was very impressed with, um, the social distancing and how they conducted the office. And so I wanted to give him a shout out. So shout out to Sheriff Rigglesworth. Thank you.
All right, um, councilmem, uh, Councilmember Spitzley, I'm, I'm, I don't generally make it a habit to address everybody's comments, but I'm gonna ask that, um, if the mayor can address what he can, but then we will arrange for if there is a need for a closed session, we will do a closed session at our next Cal per ten years.
And that's fine, but I just kinda wanted to throw it out in the universe again. I just thought it was, again, just a little jarring to, to see the bulletin come across and that council hadn't been, uh, and maybe, and I just, I thought maybe I had missed a, a, a meeting and, but have council not be brought up to speed and kinda surprised about it. At least I was, um, when it came across. So whatever's appropriate, but I would like to, if we can, get some information on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, Councilmember Hussein. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I think Councilmember Bets was first, Councilmember Bets, then Councilmember Hussein.
Thank you, President Spadefor. I, November third's coming up. I'm feeling the election spirit and just wanted to remind everybody to vote. I think, uh, Chris can respond to this. I'm not sure if people should still be sending ballots or if they should be dropping them off, but I think I'll leave that to Chris. Just a reminder, voting's really important. This is, uh, action, as is every election, but this one. So just hoping to get people out to vote as much as possible.
Thank you, Councilmember Bets. Uh, Vice President Hussein.
Sure. So folks have, um, heard me talk quite a bit about, uh, the Southwest Action Group and the really good work, um, this particular, uh, entity is doing in Southwest Lansing to, uh, to really, you know, advocate for Southwest Lansing, um, and we're talking neighborhoods, we're talking business districts, uh, and really drive positive change. Um, in any event, Swag is a, um, kind of official nonprofit. And in order to, um, you know, really continue doing the work that they've been doing, really, you know, better part of maybe the last three years, um, they do have to engage in annual fundraising. Um, and over the past three years, their largest fundraiser, uh, or primary fundraiser has been, um, their annual spaghetti dinner. Um, and that is coming up. It's going to look a little bit different this year due to COVID. Uh, and so they will celebrate at a distance, uh, and they are going to host a drive-through car hop service. Uh, and this will be on Thursday, November fifth, from five to seven PM. Uh, this will actually take place at three three zero nine West Homes, uh, which is the site of the former New City Academy. Uh, price of a spaghetti dinner ticket, one ticket is $10. Uh, that can be purchased online, um, or at the event. Uh, it will include spaghetti, garlic bread, uh, salad and a dessert. So I truly, um, you know, hope folks will consider, uh, supporting Swag, the amazing work, uh, that they are involved with, uh, by purchasing a ticket or two, uh, or sharing with your, you know, respective networks. Uh, for purchasing information, if you want to, um, get out in front of it and purchase before, uh, the day of the event, um, I would encourage folks to email the president of the group, Rachel White, and she can be reached at Rachel, which is R A C H E L L E at C O P catering dot com. Again, C O P catering dot com. Uh, or you can call her at five one seven two nine five three five seven zero. But again, uh, tickets will be sold, uh, the day of the event. So that is November fifth, five to seven PM at thirty three zero nine West Homes. Uh, thanks, President Spadefor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Councilmember Spitzley, we'll let you have two since not everyone had to go at this time, so.
Thank you. I only need one. So I wanted to, um, let everybody know that the Village of Lansing is having their second annual trunk or treat on Friday, October thirtieth. Um, it's in the Village Lansing parking lot at thirty five twenty five South Martin Luther King Boulevard. Um, you know, there's gonna be a lot of stuff there for the kids, um, candy, there's gonna be contests, um, just, you know, a DJ, um, just a great activity for the children. They're still needing donations, also candy donations, um, money donations, whatever, to make it, um, you know, a great event for the children. And so, um, if you can look on Facebook and you'll see, um, the Village Lansing, you can see all the places where they can, where you can donate, but it looks like it's gonna be a pretty good time on Friday, October thirtieth, twenty twenty, from six till eight. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I just also, uh, on the subject of Halloween, I'm pretty sure Mayor Shaw will probably mention some of the Halloween activities going on in the city of Lansing, but Halloween twenty twenty dot org, Halloween twenty twenty dot org is a website where you can go and really helps you, um, figure out how you can safely celebrate Halloween in your area based on the risk and all those types of things. I know we're foregoing passing out candy this year and perhaps we'll have enough eggs for a large quiche when we wake up in the morning, but, um, we are, I think that there are a lot of ways that folks can do it. I know the city is working pretty hard to come up with alternatives as are so many of our nonprofits and faith-based organizations. So, um, just check out, uh, the resources in our community, um, about ways to celebrate safely. Um, so I'm gonna move on and, uh, Mr. Vice President, your hands back up. Or, no?
Oh, that's residual.
Okay, very good. Then I will call on the clerk.
Okay, thank you, President Spadefor. Uh, just a couple of things going on here in the clerk's office. Yes, it, uh, this is the last council meeting, uh, before the election on November third, so a number of reminders. We have issued, um, about thirty four thousand absent voter ballots. Uh, seventy-six percent of those have been returned already, so, uh, that, uh, leaves, uh, around eight thousand people who have received a ballot, uh, and have not yet turned it back in. So, uh, you do still have time to do that. If you're, if you're local, the mail is, uh, just taking two or three days. So, uh, you know, you're, you're kinda cutting it close, uh, but the, it is still possible that the mail will get here. We do have to actually receive your ballot by eight o'clock election night. Uh, there was some conflicting things with the lawsuit that went on earlier this year that might, uh, have changed that, but, uh, it, it, at this point, as the law and the lawsuit stands, it has to actually be in, uh, my office or one of our drop boxes, uh, by eight o'clock election night. Uh, we do have three office locations that will be open all day election day, so you can turn it in at any of those three locations, um, as well as, uh, any of our fifteen drop boxes that are throughout the city at the community centers, uh, Cata locations and fire stations, um, as well as our three office locations. So lots of opportunities to return that ballot. Uh, it is still possible to get a ballot. Um, under state law, uh, we can send out ballots, uh, by first-class mail up until five o'clock this Friday. Um, now that doesn't leave much time for you to get it back. If we mail you the ballot at five o'clock on Friday, um, you have to get it back to us by eight o'clock on Monday. Uh, so you probably, uh, you might not get that ballot until Monday, so you have until, I'm sorry, eight o'clock on Tuesday. I might have misspoke there once. Eight o'clock on Tuesday to get that ballot back to us. So, um, it is, it is a tight turnaround if you wait that long. You also have the option of picking up a ballot in person at one of our three offices. We are open for walk-in voting. No appointment necessary. Downtown and, uh, twenty-five hundred South Washington, the city hall and, and twenty-five hundred South Washington are open eight to five, uh, this week and, um, the South Washington location is open until seven o'clock this Wednesday. And the Alfreda Schmidt location is open eight to six every day this week, every, uh, Monday through Friday. This weekend, we are having some very special events. Um, and I should mention that you can still register. You can register up to and on election day. Uh, so, um, if you are needing to register or update your registration, you need to bring proof of your residence to, uh, one of our three locations and you do need to come in person to be able to, to still register. Uh, so that's all, all going on. Um, this weekend, both Saturday and Sunday, we will be open from ten AM until ten PM at our South Washington location, twenty-five hundred South Washington. So twenty-four hours of voting. And during that time, we are having some, uh, special events. Um, so for Halloween, uh, we are doing, uh, souls to the polls and trunk or treat. So on, uh, Halloween, from noon to five, uh, you can, we are having, drive-through, um, candy distribution as well as there will be food vendors and, uh, nonprofit organizations with information. Uh, we're gonna have a DJ, so we're, we're making a very festive atmosphere, uh, on October thirty-first from noon to five and then again on November first from two to five. And that, that part is open for everyone, whether you're voting or not. You can choose to vote. You can choose not to vote. You can drop off your ballot if you already have one, or you can just come and bring your kids through or whatever and participate in, in those events. Those are, those are open, open to all, uh, Lansing, uh, residents. So, a great alternative, uh, to get candy for your kids, since I, I agree with President Spadefor. I think a lot of people are not likely to be, um, handing out candy this year at their homes. Monday, the day before the election, um, under the requirements of state law, all three of our ballots will stop, or all three of our locations will stop issuing ballots at four o'clock PM. And then, um, all three of our locations on Tuesday, we can, you can still register to vote and get a ballot, but only those people registering to vote are eligible to pick up an absentee ballot. So if you wait until Tuesday, you have to go to your regular polling place where you're registered, uh, if you are already registered to vote in the city of Lansing. I think I've covered it all. Um, and does anybody have any questions? Do I leave anything out?
Mr. Clerk, can you address, I know that Councilmember Wood brought this up during our Ways and Means Committee, just the issue that we had in the beginning that I know you've rectified on, on a couple of the malfunctioning ballot boxes.
Um, yes, uh, we, we did have, uh, unfortunately, one of the boxes when it was installed was not left locked, um, or I guess, I guess maybe perhaps it wasn't fully closed. And then, uh, my staff person what, did have, uh, trouble getting it locked, uh, once or, um, once was recorded and then, but she got it locked and then she couldn't get it locked. Uh, so we did have it out of order for some time. The facilities maintenance actually went and found that it was just kind of off kilter a little bit and actually, uh, was able to adjust that and get that box working correctly. Um, so, you know, we, we feel that everything was secure. It was, uh, locked, um, every, during the whole time that voters had ballots. Um, there was another unfortunate incident where the drop box at our city hall location was left unlocked, uh, for a couple of hours after it was picked up one day, um, and got reported to us. We sent someone down instantly and, and got that locked up. You know, we reviewed the video footage and, um, other than the person that reported it, uh, we didn't see anything that caused us to believe there was any, uh, any issues with any ballots, uh, that were, that were there. Um, so, uh, we, we have, uh, taken steps. We have changed to having two people, uh, collecting from the drop boxes so that they can have two people verifying that they are completely locked when we pick them up. Um, we are, you know, uh, for the, uh, ones, uh, that we have around the city that aren't in our locations, we are logging how many we get each day, um, from those. And we are, uh, sending emails to voters that we have an email address for confirming that their ballot was received. Voters can also, uh, go, uh, on their own to Lansingboats, uh, dot com and double-check that. Uh, or they can call our office and confirm that if they believe they've turned in their ballot, uh, we can confirm that we've gotten it. So multiple ways that we're doing to, just to make sure that those voters know that we have received their ballot.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Wood.
I think President Spadefor. Chris, could you address if people come into one of the three locations, um, for voting, uh, whether they're required to wear a mask, any of those types of things so that they, they know how to prepare, um, for, um, coming in?
Um, we, we are asking and strongly encouraging people to wear masks. My staff are all wearing masks. Um, but the determination is that because voting is a constitutional right, that, uh, voters can come in without a mask. Um, again, I strongly encourage for their own safety, for, uh, the safety of my staff and for the safety, you know, of, of their families, of their own community, uh, that, that folks do wear masks. And we do have other steps in ta, in, in place. You know, we do have plexiglass separating us from, uh, the voters. We are encouraging folks to, um, you know, we have pens that have been sanitized and encouraging them to, um, to use that pen. And then, once they're done with it, they would, they would leave it behind. So just trying to kind of limit those items that are, uh, touched by multiple people and, uh, trying to limit that and, uh, we, uh, and I, uh, that triggered me to remind me that, uh, one other feature that we have at our South Washington location, uh, is drive-up voting. So we can have voters, uh, we have a tent, uh, so that we can have people, uh, go out, get the application, bring it in. The voter doesn't have to leave their car. Um, so we can accomplish that. We've, uh, had that used by a family that had an infant that didn't wanna come into the building. We've had that used by, uh, voter who was a hundred years old. Um, so, you know, we, we are doing everything we can to keep folks safe. I know with, uh, with COVID, researching right now, it's a frightening time. I, there was a township in southeast Michigan, Macomb County, that, uh, the clerk and two of her staff got COVID and they had to shut down the, the office for a couple of days. So we are doing everything we can to make sure that that does not happen here.
Thank you. Uh, looks like Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you. I was just gonna ask, Chris, are you gonna have masks available? I mean, I, I, it seems so ironic that we're doing this, this mandate about masks, but yet with voting, um, you know, it's a constitutional right. So I'm just, I, I still think that, that folks should wear the mask and if they don't come with one, will you have them, to give them at the polling location?
Um, yes, we will have disposable masks available for, uh, for voters at the polling locations, uh, through some of our grants and through, um, PPE that we got from the state of Michigan. Uh, we are, uh, we do have disposable masks that we can give to voters. And we, and we will offer it to them if they come in without a mask.
And I know, uh, Secretary Benson also released a safe election guideline protocol that requires some, the poll workers to wear masks, onsite disinfectants, those kinds of things too. So. All right, uh, Councilmember Dunbar, y'all set? Thank you.
Okay.
That is it.
We're to a community event announcements, I believe.
Oh, that's right.
There's anyone in the audience and who has a community event announcement, please raise your hand. Um, this is community events, so you get up to one minute to tell us the time, place and purpose of your event. I see, uh, calling user number one. Did you have an event to note?
Here we go.
Sorry, I did not wanna comment here.
Oh, you're, okay.
Okay. Um, Erica Lynn, did you have an event that you wanted to tell us about?
Yay, okay. I think I'm unmuted.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Hi, Erica Lynn from the Village Lansing. Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley, for the beautiful spew on our second annual trunk or treat event that is happening this Friday. I'll leave out a lot of the details that she gave, cause again, thank you for giving those. But I do want to voice that we are still looking for trunk hosts. So if you know anybody that is interested in hosting a trunk or sponsoring, um, it just entails bringing candy and decorating your trunk. Um, and that would be a great way to support the event. And we are also looking for, um, prizes for our prize baskets. So any type of prizes suitable for a kid and an adult, we're doing one of each. Um, and then any like gift cards, things like that. Um, and then also donations of like, uh, PPE hand sanitizer, masks, gloves. This will be a COVID-safe event, so lots of physical distancing. Um, and of course, masks are required for both trunk hosts and attendees. So that is this Friday, from six to eight at the Village Lansing. We are facing MLK right between the villa and the Old Miss Western Dantoe. Um, and then also, if somebody could give me info on how I could get this event on that twenty twenty dot org calendar thing you guys were talking about, I would love, uh, for the event to, to be put on there.
Uh, Ms. Lynn, I don't know how that works. It's, it's, it's a national website. So, uh, if you go to Lansing, Halloween twenty twenty dot org, they may be able to help you list it there, but it, it's a national website. I, now that, now.
Thank you.
No worries.
Okay, and it looks like, uh, Loretta Stanaway has an event, community event announcement?
Yes, it's, uh, the last chance to talk about our race to restore. The Friends of Lansing's Historic Cemeteries is doing their annual five K run walk in a virtual race this year. There is still time to register. It goes through October thirty-first and you can sign up on runsignup.com or on our Facebook page for the Friends of Lansing's Historic Cemeteries. This is our major fundraiser for the year. If you like what we're doing with Mount Hope and Evergreen and North Cemeteries, this is an ideal way to support our nonprofit work. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, Propagandy, it looks like, has a community event announcement? Which I think is Michael Lynn. Or maybe not. Not sure what happened to him. Okay.
Let's move on, Mr. Clerk.
Okay. Uh, we are to speaker registration for public comment on legislative matters. So now is the time for you to begin raising your hand if you would like to speak during public comment on legislative matters. Uh, we will accept, uh, people who have their hand raised by the time the first speaker is done speaking. Um, so you are, uh, limited, uh, under the council rules, which is similar to what happens in person. We do, uh, have a cutoff time for you to sign up and raise your hand. Uh, this period is limited, public comment to items, uh, that are, uh, let's see, oh, we don't have any public hearings, so it is limited to items that are listed on the agenda under resolutions for action, ordinances for introduction and ordinances for passage. Um, so it is a limited public comment to the things that the council will actually be acting on tonight. Does not include the referral items, uh, or just general topics of discussion that is later in the agenda. Um, so please begin raising your hand, um, if you wish to address something that the council is voting on tonight. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, uh, Mr. President, Mr. Clerk. Uh, a lot of things I was gonna mention were said, so I will skip over those. Uh, in terms of Halloween, um, we do have, uh, two other events in addition to the clerk's event. Uh, from one until three PM, there will be a drive-through Halloween event at Francis Park, um, where I wanna say we have thirty or forty vendors giving out candy and I think they'll have flu shots and a variety of other things. Our parks department's done a really good job putting that together. So from one to three, Francis Park, drive-through Halloween. And then from three to six, the Lansing Police Department is doing a trunk retreat down at the South Side Police Station on Wise Road. So you can get your candy from one to three at Francis Park, three to six at LPD on the South Side. And then the Clerk's office, as the Clerk mentioned, has it all day, or noon until six, I believe he said. So wanted to make sure folks knew about that. And then anybody who does choose to trick or treat between six and eight PM, we, we've put out information from the Department of, the State Department of Health and Human Services with recommendations. So there, that is on our website, and I hope folks will take a look at that. I too have been hearing from a lot of people that they're not going to be giving out candy. So, and I know there are a lot of parents who don't want their kids going door to door. So I think it would be discouraged, but if folks choose to do it, please check out the recommendations on our website. The last council meeting was canceled, so I didn't have a chance to report that after the parking ordinance, the overnight parking ordinance was repealed, we have issued refunds for those who did buy the parking permits. You know, it had been since last year, but for much of the time, we were delayed in enforcement. So we made the decision to issue full refunds. So if there's anybody out there watching this who bought a parking permit for overnight, please contact our parking office and you'll get a full refund. And we appreciate you purchasing that permit. But now that the ordinance has been taken off the books, we have refunded those permits. I wanted to let alert folks that we have issued, that I issued a Sustainability and Climate Action Executive Order. This mostly deals with city government and goals for the Climate Action Plan, which we sent out to council. I hope you all saw it. The, there's going to be a committee, an external committee established. And Lori Welch, who's our Sustainability Officer, is is directing all of this, so it's resourced. We still have to work on our external climate action plans. That's still in progress with input coming in from the community. But I think it was a very good first step. Of course, we put it out and didn't see a lot of media on that, but that's the way it goes. But I do want to thank council members who who were part of this. And we, that was passed last year, this money passed from council last year, I know Councilman Dunbar, Councilman Jackson spearheaded it, but I believe it was unanimous last year when when that money was passed. And so we're moving forward in that, and I think that's a positive thing for the city. The goals are short-term, medium-range, and long-term, and are aggressive, but but we should be aggressive. So I'm excited about that. Finally, I want to remind everybody that that we do have our 211 system for those who need rental assistance or mortgage assistance or other things in this very difficult time. The One Lansing Fund did raise about a half million dollars, about $600,000. And we were all, you know, raising money towards that. So folks who need help, please call the 211. The One Lansing Fund is is distributing eviction and mortgage diversion and other emergency relief funding. And United Way has done a great job of of running that fund. So if there are those out there who need help, we know that 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 times are still tough. Please contact 211. You can ask about the One Lansing Fund. You can ask about the United Way and resources that we have to assist people. So everything else I was going to mention has been mentioned, so I won't, I won't repeat, but but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, we are to public comment on legislative matters. And as I indicated previously, that is limited to the items listed on the Agenda Resolutions for Action, ordinances for introduction, and ordinances for passage. Speakers are limited to three minutes, and we will be, we will stop recognizing additional raised hands after the first speaker completes their time.
Mr. Clerk, before you move on, I just wanted to let you know, there is an issue. Apparently Zoom has got some updates gone into it, so some of our callers are using an older version of Zoom. So we have to make them a panelist to speak, so that it might be a little slow getting some of them into. So just just give a little pause for Dominic to to bring them in.
Okay, very good. Okay. First, we have call-in user one, who will be followed by Loretta Stanaway.
Still not the part I want to speak. Thank you.
We'll come back to you.
Okay, we'll lower your hands. Loretta Stanaway, and that will not count as the first speaker to cut off.
You're all done.
Two things tonight, I wanted to lend my support to the proposal to initiate a cadet program in the fire department. I think that is a wonderful effort, and I fully support that and would love to see a lot of people take part in that and participate and eventually become firefighters. The other thing is the U-Haul situation, again, I am still against the rezoning, and probably that will not change ever. But I want to just mention that as I came home tonight, I noticed that the Rite Aid at Cedar and Jolly, immediately adjacent to the existing U-Haul properties, was knocked down in a matter of a couple of days and is being discarded probably as we speak. So I'm I'm guessing that perhaps the U-Haul folks have decided that they're not going to make the progress they wanted with the Kmart site, and that they have purchased that corner lot and will expand there instead, in which case I would wholeheartedly support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that's the end of people being able to sign in. We have Propagandy, which I believe is Michael Lynn, followed by Julie Kramer, Julia Kramer. Go ahead. And he's gone as well. This time, okay.
Sorry, Chris, give him a second. I just got a text saying that he's been having some difficulty speaking.
Yeah, this this is one of the persons that needs to be brought in as a panelist, so Dominic's going to bring him in as a panelist.
Okay.
He should be in now. Do you have Propagandy in the speaker list? I do.
He's just not, just not connected to audio. Sir, if you're listening, why don't you, if you could call in, maybe using one of the numbers. Mr. Councilmember Betts, if you've got contact with the person, maybe send them the, him the call-in information. And then, Mr. Clerk, if he comes back in before we end public comment, let's, we'll, we'll, we'll extend it for him to to participate.
All right, thank you. So then we have Julia Kramer and then Erica Lynn.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um, I just wanted to lend my support to the procedures for open virtual public meetings due to the pandemic. I'm also in support of of keeping these procedures into the foreseeable future, because they create much more accessible meetings for everybody to attend. So I really appreciate those, and I'm excited that we can continue with virtual meetings. That's all I wanted to comment on in in this meeting, so thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Erica Lynn.
This is actually Mike Lynn. I must be having an issue with this, because I got booted in the events section too, and I had a really important event that I wanted to explain. It may only take me a minute and a half. Can I, can I do that before I talk about?
Yes, yes, Mr. Lynn, please, go ahead.
Okay, so Thursday, 5:30 PM, the Retiree Healthcare Rally will be at the mayor's house, put together by the City of Lansing retirees Facebook group. The retirees and their families, employees, and their representatives, the city council, and the public were never consulted when the mayor covertly acted with the help of outside contractors to try to suddenly cut our healthcare. Since we first received the unsigned letters, we have not been able to talk to the mayor about these cuts. Let's show up at the mayor's home to see if he will take our issues more seriously. This was written by, again, the City of Lansing retirees, and there is a Facebook group for the City of Lansing retirees that they have been speaking on all of this. This is a very, very, very important event, in my opinion. What's happening to these retirees is deplorable. It's even worse than defunding the police. So I'm done with that aspect, 5:30 Thursday, if you guys would like. And then can I, can I, can I speak on the ordinance that's coming through with the mask now? So I think Brandon was making a lot of great points, and I appreciate Councilman Betts for bringing those things in, as well as Councilman Jackson. The the thing that concerns me is that we, we know that Lyndeville has no intent on this being used as a, a issue that could be used, you know, racially motivated stops or anything like that. But Chief Green just made secondary stops illegal and took that out of the repertoire as far as how to use that. But this mask thing could be used similar to a stop and frisk. So being that it's a misdemeanor, you know, you always have the rights. If you have not committed a crime, or if you're not under investigation of a crime, then you can refuse search, you can refuse to speak, you can refuse to have any part of anything if you have not been brought into investigations of a crime. And so this being used as a misdemeanor, being named as a misdemeanor, would open that up for abuse. So with Ingham County Health Department naming racism as a public health concern, let's not add to it. So this is fine. It's good. I understand what you guys want to use it for. It's for like large gatherings and so on and so forth, but let's put that stuff in this proposal. Therefore, these police are not just riding around stopping young black kids that may not have a mask and and put them up against the car and finding other reasons to, you know, to to have issue here. I'm worried that, given the proximity to where police are, given they're saturated on the south end of town, that we would be, we would be negatively impacted by that. Our community would be anyway. So I'm all for the proposal, if it's amended in some way to make sure that it will not be used by the police department as a weapon to replace their, the secondary stop and fraction issue. So that's all I have to say on that. I appreciate you guys, Brandon Betts and and Brian T. Jackson for making that part of the conversation. Thank you.
Mr. Lynn, before we let you go, was Erica looking to make public comment as well?
No, she wasn't.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we weren't excluding anyone.
Thank you.
Okay, and then I I thought there was another name there.
Edward Osmar.
Okay, Edward Osmar.
I'm, there we go. Hello. My name is Edward Osmar, and I'm a retiree from the City of Lansing. I retired in 98. When I hired in with the city, there were no unions. You forced me into a union. You forced me to negotiate a contract.
Mr. Osmar, could, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I really am. But this is for legislative matters. If you, if this is not an issue that's directly before the council, we'll ask that you wait till the second public comment opportunity at the end of the meeting.
I'm sorry, sir, I'll wait. Thank you.
No, that's, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. We'll get back to you later.
Okay, that seems to be all of our speakers at this point. We are to resolutions for action, and our first one is by Council President Spatafor, extending the state of emergency.
Sure, Mr. Vice President, I'm going to throw the gavel over to you and ask to move my resolution.
Right, President Spatafor, we appreciate that. The resolution has been moved by President Spatafor. Is there further discussion? President Spatafor.
I guess I should, I can't, I guess I should raise my hand, actually, but so the 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 resolution before you, it's a little different than the one you've seen in the past. The ones in the past relied on the governor's executive orders. This one is entirely based on our state of emergency, as well as issues from the US Department of Health and Human Services and Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. Same, same function, functionally the same thing, but it does extend our state of emergency in the City of Lansing until November 30th. That is the day after our last meeting in November. So it is my hope that we don't have to do this again, but I fully anticipate that that we will be taking a look at another extension. But this just extends our state of emergency, thus thus necessitating and allowing us to continue with these virtual meetings, among other, among other things we've detailed in the past. So I will stop talking now.
Well, we do appreciate the explanation. I'm not seeing any other hands up, so Clerks, could you please take the roll?
On passage of the resolution, Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Member Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Member Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
AAs, the resolution is adopted. We're to the Committee on Development and Planning. We have Act 3, he is our first one.
Yeah, Chair Spitzley, Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. What we have before us is a resolution to vacate an obsolete utility easement, extending 44 feet north from K Street, which is requested by Lux Construction. In Development and Planning Committee, we asked what the purpose of the utility easement was for, and they said that there would be a grow operation constructed on the property. We also asked, did they, have they received all the necessary permits to have a grow operation? And the answer was yes. And with that, I move the resolution.
The motion has been made. Is there any comments from council members? See, Councilmember Wood.
Councilmember Spitzley, you said that you asked what the easement was for. So they have to have the easement in order to build the facility? Or this is an easement that we're vacating? Which is the way I read it. And what did we use that easement for?
They're going to build on the.
Okay, well, but what did we have the easement for?
Oh, I'm sorry, um. I don't think.
Was it utilities, was it?
It was a utility. It was a, it's an obsolete utility easement.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, seeing no further discussion, Mrs. Book, would you, or I'm sorry. Chair, if you want to call the roll, I'm not sure it counts, so we'll just ask Mr. Clerk to please call the roll.
Okay, passage of the resolution. Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes, again.
Councilmember Wood.
Yeah.
AAs, as adopted, next we have setting a hearing for properties on South Washington Square.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. This will be setting a public hearing to establish a commercial rehabilitation district in 329 to 337 South Washington Square. That's down there on where Washington Square is. It's the Studio 109 to the corner that has Strange Matters, and it encompasses also. It's Studio 109, the subway, and Strange Matters, I believe. The commercial rehabilitation district would, the reason for that is to do some upgrades for the commercial buildings down below, and also upgrades for the apartments that are above the commercial buildings. The commercial rehabilitation district, it's 10 years. And I think it's roughly $257,000 that they're looking at. And that, of course, is tax increment financing. I think that's it. With that, I'll move the resolution.
Thank you. It has been moved. Is there further discussion? I have a question. I'm sorry, this is perhaps my newness, although three years in, maybe I should know this one already. But a commercial rehabilitation district, so that is just, it's the tax capture for the improvements that they can do on those buildings. And then, okay, so they'll still pay the the baseline tax, but the 10-year growth will be used to, okay. Very good. I have no other questions. I do see some from Councilmember Wood and Vice President Hussein's. Councilmember Wood?
Well, Adam might want to add some clarity.
Oh, Mr. Vice President, would you like to jump in first?
You know what? I actually was only able to attend a, just a segment of the DNP Committee where this was actually vetted, and that was because I had parent-teacher conferences. And so I guess I'm confused. I thought, and I, I'm probably wrong. I guess I thought a commercial rehabilitation district allowed for, almost like, almost like an Oprah, sir. I thought it allowed for a freezing of the taxable value. I thought it allowed for freezing of the taxable value pre-investment. Is that not how these work? I guess I.
I've heard from the city attorney that you are correct, Mr. Hussein.
Oh, and I apologize then. That was my mistake.
Okay, and so the free, so when we look at the money to rehab, right? So we would look at taxable value prior to that and that would be frozen for 10 years. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was right.
That's what I meant. Sorry about that.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, President Spatafor. Do you know, I believe these same properties also had received obsolete tax credits some years back. Do you know if that's correct or not? And if you don't have the answer, is that something that we could have the answer for at the public hearing?
Councilmember Wood, I don't have the answer and I don't see anybody from not left foot, but leap on here. Maybe Mr. Venker could answer the question.
Sir Venker is on. Mr. Venker, are you able to answer? Oh, Chris Klein is here.
Chris Klein is here as well. I just saw his name.
Mr. Klein, if you are here and want to turn on your camera or at least your microphone, we'd appreciate some clarity.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, thank you very much, counsel. Yeah, so there was a an easy certificate on these properties for the residential units, I believe back in 2007 is when they're first provided on the property. They are expired and the work that's associated with the current project it was not part of that original project and is also due to the further deterioration of the building since that time. So it's just further reinvestment in the building beyond what was done in 2007.
And Councilmember Wood, we're going to, the applicant is going to be here for the public meeting as well.
Okay, thank you.
Public hearing, excuse me. Losing it.
Thank you.
No further questions? All right, there is a motion before us. If the clerk would please call the role.
The resolution, Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
AAs, the resolution is adopted. So now we are to setting a public hearing for the corresponding certificate for the same set of properties.
That's correct. And I didn't say when the public hearing was, but the public hearing is scheduled for November 9th, 2020 for both the establishment of the commercial rehabilitation district and the actual commercial rehabilitation certificate. And with that, I move the resolution.
With that, I'm going to preemptively declare that I'm going to be sick on the 9th because it sounds like it's going to be a long meeting. No further discussion. I think I'm going to ask the clerk, please call the role.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes, that's me.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
AAs, the resolution is adopted. And now we are to the resetting of a hearing. This hearing was actually scheduled for the meeting that was canceled, so it's for ZH 2019.
Right, and this is the resetting of the public hearing in consideration of the conditional rezoning at 5400 South Cedar Street from F Commercial and J Parking Districts to G2 Wholesale District. This is the Kmart property and it was supposed to have a public hearing on October 12th, but we didn't have a meeting on October 12th. And so now it has been rescheduled for November 30th, 2020. And with that, I move the resolution.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, if clerk, please call the role.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
AAs, the resolution is adopted. Okay. We are to the Committee on General Services regarding a training requirement.
Councilmember Hussein, Vice President Hussein.
All right, yeah, so just a little background on this. All of our, and we've talked a lot about this. We actually meant to have a quicker turnaround in general services, but there were a couple of things that we had to work through. In any event, all of our city's boards and commissions are subject to the city of Lansing's ethics ordinance, our conflict of interest policies. And we also hold, or I should say, they hold meetings that are subject to the Open Meetings Act. Most boards and commissions, it's been pretty, I think, clear over the past several months that they have not been receiving training in these areas on a regular basis. So to remedy this, General Services first took a look at a potential change to our current code. When we were, when we were taking a look at that and having conversations, the seat attorney's office actually opined that to do so, to actually put this requirement into our code, would put the board chairperson in a position where they could be in violation, potentially face charges of some sort, which we certainly didn't want, obviously, to put our citizen volunteers into that type of kind of position. City Attorney's Office in turn recommended a resolution. So we worked over the course of really several meetings to fine tune the resolution that is before you guys today. The resolution does state that annually, every member of a board or commission authorized by city ordinance or the city charter will receive training on the ethics ordinance, the conflicts of interest, policies and the State's Open Meetings Act. And that a new appointee to a board or commission must complete the aforementioned training within 60 days of their appointment. Also, in accordance with the resolution, the Office of the City Attorney will coordinate all trainings, whether they be in person or some alternative method. Once the annual training is completed by board commission, I'm sorry, board member or a commission member, a certificate of completion will be filed with the city clerk. And then lastly, the resolution states that each year when the budget is passed, a resolution reaffirming this annual training requirement shall be presented in Lansing City Council. We talked a lot about how one iteration of council cannot bind another iteration of council via resolution. This annual training requirement will go into effect 30 days after the passage of this resolution. And I think what held us up probably the most, President Spatafor, was the conversation that centered on enforceability. And so we talked a lot about the enforceability of this, you know, being that it is a resolution. City Attorney did say that the failure to complete training would not necessarily mandate removal regarding suspension of a member. And that's not obviously what we're trying to get to here, but we did want it to have some teeth. Regarding suspension of a member until the training was completed, that would have to be actually listed in the board's individual bylaws. And so for that resolution, we also, I should say for that reason, we also added a recommendation in this resolution that boards and commissions adopt such language. And then if you look toward the end of the resolution, it also, we also put in there that the resolution or language, that the resolution upon passage would be transmitted to the boards and commissions so that they know that we have made, you know, this recommendation. So with that being said, I would move the resolution on the annual training requirement that all city boards and commissions receive the appropriate training.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Councilmember Betts.
Hey, Mr. President. Jim, one question for you. Do you think that your office has the capacity to fulfill this resolution?
Technology, Mr. Betts. We're producing a video in connection with the city TV folks and we'll be providing that video to all boards and commissions. But we'll also have an attorney present to answer any questions that is present somehow on Zoom or physically depending on the situation at the time. I might indicate also that this morning, we did send the open meetings rules that you just adopted to all the boards and commissions. So they have that, at least that piece of it. But we can do the training, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, could Mr. Clerk please call the role?
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
AAs, the resolution is adopted. We are to the Committee on Public Safety for a setting a show cause hearing.
Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Council President. So what we have before us is a sentence show cause hearing in consideration of issuance of orders to make safer demolish to the owners of property located at 2108 East Kavanaugh Road. The original tag date on this house was back in 2017, so it looks like March 29th, 2017, submitted into make safer demolish process on May 23rd, 2019. The property is vacant, repairs exceeding building SEV. There's been no contact from the owner and it's a fire damage structure, so we need to make safer demolish for 30 days. And show cause hearing is set for November 9th. With that, I would move the resolution.
Thank you. There's proper motion before us. Seeing no further discussion, Mr. Clerk, please call the role.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
AAs, the resolution is adopted and we are to the appointment of A. Anneal.
Councilmember Garza.
All right, so the joint appointment of A. Anneal to the Ingham County City of Lansing Community Corrections Advisory Board for a term to expire September 17th, 2021. So whereas the Ingham County Board of Commissioners made the appointment of A. Anneal as a criminal defense attorney representative to the, a representative to the Ingham County City of Lansing Community Corrections Advisory Board for a term to expire September 17th, 2021, the Committee on Public Safety met on September 24th, 2020 and took a front of action. So let it be resolved that this Lansing City Council hereby affirms the appointment of A. Anneal as a criminal defense attorney representative to the Ingham County City of Lansing Community Corrections Advisory Board for a term to expire, once again, September 17th, 2021. And with that, I would move the resolution.
Proper motion before the council. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, the clerk, please call the role.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
AAs, the resolution is adopted, which takes us to the Committee of the Whole for the Fire Department Cadet.
Vice President Hussein.
Sure, this resolution authorizes the fire chief to establish and maintain a cadet fire explorer program within the Lansing Fire Department. We had Chief Tobin in earlier to Committee of the Whole to discuss the need for this particular resolution. He talked about the fact that there are currently 10 Lansing School District students that are enrolled in a Fire 1 and Fire 2 program through a partnership. This is a partnership between the Lansing School District as well as the Lansing Fire Department. In any event, they, it's a year-long program. They essentially are preparing these 10 participants for their Fire 1 and Fire 2 state certification exams. Those will be taken in June. In order for this program to have state backing, there must be a resolution authorizing such a program that's passed by the local unit of government, in this case, the Lansing City Council. As part of the committee of the whole process, it was clear, you know, committee members were incredibly supportive. Councilman Garza and myself had an opportunity to go out and take a look at this program on Friday. We were blown away candidly, you know, so we want to certainly take our hat off to Chief Odom, Chief Randall, Chief Christensen, as well as Captain Rivet. We're all really doing just an exceptional job with these young people in this program. So again, this is a resolution authorize the fire chief to establish and maintain this fire explorer program and it is necessary for state backing. So with that said, I would move the resolution.
There is proper motion before us. Seeing no further discussion, I would ask the clerk to please call the role.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Senator Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
AAs, the resolution is adopted. The, that takes us to the Joint Representation.
Yeah, Council, Vice President Hussein.
Sure, we had our city attorney in to discuss this resolution and the need for it earlier tonight as part of the committee of the whole process. It was explained to us that as a city, we've been served in the matter of election integrity fund at all versus the city of Lansing and city of Flint, said case pending, United States Western District Court in Grand Rapids. Essentially, this is a lawsuit challenging the grants that were handed down the upcoming election. In any event, Clark Hill, which is on the city's approved council list, is representing the city of Flint. And they've offered joint representation to us with the understanding that the legal fees of Clark Hill for any services rendered to the city of Lansing will not be paid by the city of Lansing. So they are essentially donating their, their services. The city attorney has agreed that our interests align with the interests of Flint in this lawsuit and they are recommending joint representation. So with that said, I would move the resolution.
All right, we had discussion in Cal. I see no further discussion. Proper motion before us. Mr. Clerk, please call the role.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
AAs, the resolution is adopted. To setting a hearing for the lease agreement for the shuffleboards.
All right, so I'll take that as well. Not a problem. People are, you know, pretty familiar, obviously, with Lansing Shuffleboard and Social Club LLC is looking to do the former city market. In any event, we got two different things going on right now. We were supposed to obviously have a public hearing. That public hearing on the project plan didn't take place. We'll be hoping to reset that in just a moment. But that project plan deals with, if I talk about it now, I suppose I don't have to talk about it then. But that deals with a business loan that they have actually applied for with the Lansing Economic Development Corporation. And that project plan is actually necessary per state statute to receive that loan. This is the lease and so it's been best practice essentially for city council to hold public hearings on lease agreements that extend more than five years. And in this case, the terms for this lease agreement would be 40 years. In terms of rent, we're looking at $24,000 a year initially. The annual rent would increase by the Consumer Price Index at 2.5%, whichever is higher. There would be a calculation, I'm sorry, a recalculation at year 10 that would include some revenue sharing. That formula of sorts is laid out in the agreement. And then for every year thereafter, the annual rent would once again increase by the Consumer Price Index or 2.5% whichever is higher. Just very quickly, in terms of some of the use and requirements and conditions that are laid out in this lease agreement, states that the building shall be used as a food hall and event space, that marijuana-related uses are not prohibited or are prohibited, sorry, that the lessee shall host free weekly community programming, that the lessee shall make event space available for use by community groups and allow reduced rates for city of Lansing-based groups or individuals. Violations of the use may result damages to the city of up to $10,000 per month. The lessee must maintain restroom facilities for public and non-patron use. Lansing-based vendors are eligible for rent reduction. City's rent consent is needed to sublet or otherwise assign the lease and prevailing wages required for all construction workers under this project. Again, this pertains to the lease agreement. The public hearing would be November 9th, sorry, at 7:00 PM. So that being said, I would move the resolution.
There's proper motion before us. Any further discussion? Seeing none, if clerk, please call the role.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Senator Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Senator Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
AAs, the resolution is adopted. And now there's another resolution for a public hearing for the same group.
Mr. Vice President.
And so this actually pertains to the project plan that I referenced earlier. And so the original public hearing had been set. And so the original public hearing had been set for October twelfth. We talked at length about why that meeting had to be canceled. And so the new date for the public hearing would be November ninth, seven P M. And again, this is for a business loan that this group has applied for with the Lansing Economic Development Corporation in an amount not to exceed sixty five thousand dollars. With that said, I would move the resolution.
Motion's properly before us. I see no further discussion. If the clerk will please call the roll.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
That's member Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
A is zero and A is the resolution is adopted and we are to the resetting the hearing on the special assessment for the Montgomery Drainage District.
Mr. Vice President.
All right. So same deal here. We were set to have this public hearing on October twelfth. We had to cancel to ensure we weren't running afoul of the State's Open Meetings Act. That being said, the new date for the public hearing again will be November ninth. That's why President Spatafor is actively looking for excuse not to be a part of that meeting. And that will be held via Zoom as well. Was discussed as part of tonight's Committee of the Whole meeting that the Public Service Department will be sending notices to all property owners in either letter or postcard format. We, of course, are supportive of the the letter format if possible. We don't want them getting confused with all of the election mailers that are coming in. But in any event, for those that have already appealed, it was also discussed that those folks that have sent in written communications do not have to resubmit those written communications. So again, the new date would be November ninth, seven P M. That being said, I would move the public.
Right. The motion is properly before us. Seeing no further discussion, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Let's remember Garza.
Yes.
That's member Hussein.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
That's member Spatafor.
Yes.
That's member Spitzley.
Yes.
That's member Wood.
Yes.
A is zero and A is that resolution is adopted and we are to the virtual public meetings procedures.
Mr. Vice President, you have the gavel.
All right, President Spatafor, you've been recognized.
Yes, I move the resolution establishing procedures for the open virtual public meetings due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. P A two twenty eight, I think, just recently signed into law Senate Bill one one zero eight establishes protocols for public bodies such as the City of Lansing City Council to have virtual meetings. One of those requirements is that we set rules and guidelines. Most of these rules and guidelines are basically verbatim from the law. With the exception of the suspension of our rule thirty six, which allows council to do roll call votes, this would actually require roll call votes on all of our actions as well as the announcement of where we're participating virtually. And Councilmember Spitzley noted that while this does extend for through twenty twenty one, it is not our hope to be virtual for the entire duration of that period of time, but it will allow us to be virtual in whole or in part should it be necessary to do so. So with that, I would move this resolution.
Right. There is a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing none, clerk, would you take the roll, please?
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
That's member Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley. That's number one.
Yes.
A is zero and A is the resolution is adopted. We are to the Committee on Ways and Means for the grant acceptance for the
Yeah, Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, President Spatafor. The first resolution grant acceptance that we have before us this evening is for the city clerk and this would be for forty four thousand six hundred and forty eight dollars. With the COVID outbreak at M S U, the city had an opportunity to reassess its risk and found that additional solutions to keep our election workers and our public safe would include some fresh air exchanges for our building that we're using at South Washington and drive through voting. These dollars would be used for temporary employee help. It would be used for an air exchange unit in SWAT. It would also, as the clerk indicated, a drive through tent where people could come and not have to leave their vehicles and vote. There would be there would be temporary signage as well as communication. So with that, oh, and there's no match on behalf of the city. So with that, I would move this grant acceptance.
There's a proper motion before us. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
That's member Garza.
Yes.
That's member Hussein.
Yes.
That's member Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Number Spitzley.
Yes.
That's number one.
Yes.
A is zero and A is that resolution is adopted. We're to grant acceptance for D U I and seat belts enforcement.
My customer would.
Thank you, President Spatafor. This would be for a grant acceptance of fifty five thousand eight hundred and three dollars. This would be for the Lansing Police Department, M S U and East Lansing. We would be the fiduciaries for M S U and East Lansing. What this would allow for is an additional two hundred and eight hours dedicated to D U I observations and fifty three additional hours for seat belts. And the D U Is last year, there were seven thousand, a little over seven thousand four hundred in the state of Michigan that were involved with serious injuries or deaths. There were over thirty seven hundred dealing with seat belts. What this would do is allow for our officers to be part of a national program. And there would be specific days, periods that they would be doing these patrols. It also covers our F I C A, our retirement and workers comp as as part of that. For the D U Is, we're looking at eighteen thousand six hundred and eighty five dollars. That would be for the City of Lansing. And for the seat belt enforcement, it would be four thousand seven hundred and sixty two dollars. And with that, I would move this grant acceptance resolution.
There's a proper motion before us. Seeing no further discussion, if the clerk will please call the roll.
Councilmember Betts.
No.
No.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
That's member Jackson.
Yes.
That's member Spatafor.
Yes.
That's member Spitzley. That's my rule.
Yes.
Seven A is one A. The resolution is adopted. And that brings us to ordinances for introduction. The Committee on Development and Planning, following ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, providing that the code of ordinances be amended by providing for the rezoning of a property located in the City of Lansing, Michigan, for the revision of the district maps adapted by section twelve forty six point zero two of the code for property located Z two twenty twenty fifty five twenty eight South Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard rezoned from D one Professional Office District to F Commercial District was introduced by the Committee on Development and Planning around a first time by its title and referred to the Committee on Development and Planning.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. So what we have before us is a request for rezone, as the clerk said, of fifty five twenty eight South Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard. This is kind of one of those odd rezonings where approximately two thirds of the property is zoned D one Professional Office. And the other one third of the property is already zoned F Commercial. And so the request is to basically merge the properties and make them one zone, which is F Commercial. The on September first, twenty twenty, the planning board voted unanimously for approval. And the planning department also recommends rezoning. And with that, I would move the resolution to set a public hearing for November thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Here's a proper motion before us. Seeing no further discussion, the clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
That's member Garza.
Yes.
That's member Hussein.
Yes.
That's member Jackson.
Yes.
That's member Spatafor.
Yes.
That's member Spitzley.
Yes.
That's member Wood.
Yes.
A is zero and A is the resolution is adopted, setting the public hearing. Our next ordinance. I'll read in the following ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, providing that the code of ordinances be amended by providing for the rezoning of property located in the City of Lansing, Michigan, for the revision of the district maps adopted by section twelve forty six point two of the code for property located Z three twenty twenty, ten thirty South Home Street rezoned from B Residential and D one Professional Office Districts to D M four Residential District was introduced by the Committee on Development and Plan around a first time by its title and referred to the Committee on Development and Planning.
Sorry, Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. This rezoning is for the Home Street School and the the Home Street School there. The proposal there is to turn the school proper into forty seven residential apartments. And then on the rest of the property, the campus there to build sixty one additional apartment units. We kind of vetted this a little bit through development and planning, and there were a lot of questions about green space and parking. Ms. Statuette told us that they have to provide the appropriate number of parking for the apartments there. The number of apartments may be less depending on the layout. The proposal is for I'm sorry, is for a studio and one and two bedroom apartments, I believe. It was unanimously approved by on September first, twenty twenty, by the planning board. And with that, I move the resolution for a public hearing on November thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Proper motion before us. Is there any further discussion? Council Vice President Hussein.
Yeah, just very, very quickly, Councilwoman Spitzley, I know there was a lot of, a lot of conversation. I mean, this goes back to two thousand and seven when that neighborhood was really actively involved in advocating for, you know, some some maintaining of green space. And so part of the committee process, we had, we had, you know, made it clear to Ms. Statuette that we would we would at some point be expecting to hear from the applicant so they could, you know, answer some of these questions that have been longstanding. Are they supposed to be present for the public hearing? Was it tonight? Okay, I just wanted to make sure that.
For the public hearing, and you are correct, Councilmember Hussein, there were a number of questions and concerns Councilmember Betts expressed and also Councilmember Garza, and one of them was the green space. Apparently, when the owner of the property went around to the neighborhood, there were some commitments made, and one of them was the availability of green space. However, when you look at the conceptual drawing, it appears that the only green space available is the green space in between the parking. And so we told Ms. Statuette to let the applicant know that we were going to be asking some very tough questions about the availability of green space, a common area, and some other things that they had made some commitments to to the to the residents. One of the other concerns was, you know, the availability of enough parking and whether or not the apartment renters would be required to park on the street. And we were told no that they're required to provide parking as part of this rezone and as part of the construction of the apartments that they were required to provide appropriate parking on the campus. And so that parking really cuts into the green space that and, you know, the recreation space that apparently was promised to the local residents. And so they are coming during the public hearing to be prepared to respond to some of those questions and concerns.
This. Sorry. Any questions? Very good. Mr. Clerk, no further discussion. Please call the call the do the thing we hope.
On setting the public hearing, Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
That's member Dunbar.
Kathy.
I thought I had said yes. I didn't come down. Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
That's member Jackson.
Yes.
That's member Spatafor.
Yes.
Number Spitzley.
Yes.
That's number one.
Yes.
A is zero and A is the resolution adopted, setting the public hearing. Okay, we have the Committee of the Whole introduced an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan to amend the Lansing Codified Ordinances Code by amending chapter six oh two, section six oh two point one one to prevent disease prolonged life and promote public health by providing for enforcement of local health orders or regulations issued pursuant to the Michigan Public Health Code being nineteen seventy eight P A three sixty eight as amended, M C L three thirty three point one one zero one, S C A, to provide for penalties for willful violation of such orders or regulations with personal knowledge as a misdemeanor or upon being informed of such order or regulation by a law enforcement officer as a civil infraction. The ordinance is read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee of the Whole.
Okay, Mr. Vice President, I'm gonna throw you the gavel and I'll take care of these ones if you will.
I got it. President Spatafor, go ahead.
All right. So the next two items, we're gonna take, obviously, separate votes, but they're they're very, very closely related. The first one is setting the public hearing on this longer term ordinance, but the second one is an emergency ordinance that will go into effect. Jim, you'll have to correct me, but I assume it's right after the vote. Is that incorrect?
That's incorrect. It has to be published.
Published. Okay, so it'll be published. Very good. Thanks, Mr. Clerk. But the it basically allows for the City of Lansing to help enforce public health orders issued by local, the local health departments of Ingham and Eaton County. There is a substitute that was sent to the council, and I'll put it up on the screen as soon as I'm done yakking here, that also enforces state state orders and those issued by the Department of Health and Human Services at the state level, allowing for L P V to issue civil infractions rather than just misdemeanors. As Director Vale said in our Committee of the Whole meeting, we don't want to necessarily give folks criminal records for some of the things unless it's obviously willful and malicious sort of disregard for those orders. But this allows for civil tickets to be issued. And it also adds a little bit more due process to a violation of health orders. As it stands now, the Health Department pretty much has the ability to say you violated it. You get to appeal to them and they get to have the final decision on whether or not your appeal is valid or not. This would interject the court system and also, as Mr. Smear explained, the City Attorney's Office to determine whether a misdemeanor or a civil infraction were properly issued. It basically adds capacity as well to ensure that public health and safety are being considered by businesses, individuals, and so on and so forth. There's a lot of discussion in the Committee of the Whole about racial equity to ensure that we were not just providing one more opportunity for disparate enforcement of laws against people of color, black, black and brown residents of the City of Lansing. one more opportunity for um disparate enforcement of laws against people of color, black uh, black and brown residents of the city of Lansing. Um so what we are going to do um through the non-emergency ordinance is we're going to um after a few weeks, have the City Attorney report back to us about the data that's been collected on the number of civil infractions and misdemeanors uh broken down by race, um and also um take a look at other ways that we could possibly empower different arms of the city to enforce these ordinances, such as the Code Compliance Division or other parts of the city um that may make sense. Uh the we, the, the discussion we had in Cal uh with Health Department Director Vale was just not, we weren't ready to have a thorough conversation on what um what, what that might look like and, and what, what is and what is not legal. Further, we are at this point adopting a resolution that um, an ordinance, excuse me, that mirrors that of our neighbors to the east and East Lansing, so that we can create some sort of parity between what uh the law looks like in the two largest cities in the county. So I think I've, I've summarized it, but I will leave it open to uh Mr. Smirka if I've missed anything important here. Um and I will put up here real quick before we turn it over to Mr. Smirka, the um let me find it here. We're substitute share. So if you look at the, the emergency ordinance, we're not substituting the uh permanent ordinance, because this is just setting the public hearing. We'll make those changes as necessary if this is adopted. But see in line five, we've added state and local health orders. Line seventeen, State Director of Health and Human Services or local health officer. And then on page two, line seven, State Director of Health and Human Services or the local public health officer. Um and then that came through from the City Attorney's Office. You should all have that in your inbox. Um if you do not, uh please reach out to Sherry for a full copy of it, but it's pretty plain and simple. But uh we didn't want to amend that on fly because it is a uh very um important um change to be made. So, Mr. Smirka, anything I missed?
Uh, just answering a couple of questions from the Committee of the Whole. Yes, we see everything, civil infractions and misdemeanor warrant requests through this office. So we're, we're, we are able to exercise our common reasonable judgment on the issuance of the. We also can collect the data, report back to the City Council on the uh, what types of, to whom these citations are being issued or the misdemeanor warrants are there. There was a question about stop and frisk. Can't do anything like that in civil infraction ticket. Um we don't exercise stop and frisk. Unreasonable search and seizure uh claims only come out of arrests. So if there are no arrests, there's no right to search. So hopefully that answers Mr. Betts's question. Uh also, on the um diversity issue, in the actual order of the Health Department, there is a section that everything has to comply with Elliot Larson's civil rights. I understand that it's just in the, the uh order, but it's gotta be practiced, and that's why we'll monitor the situation and report back uh to the City Council. Again, the section A is a misdemeanor. The fine can go up to uh five hundred dollars. That's a standard fine. Uh we have similar ordinances on the books right now. Failure to comply with the lawful order of a police officer is a misdemeanor, five hundred dollars. The civil infraction follows a schedule that's in our administrative code. I believe it starts at a hundred fifty and goes up, and there's a due process element that's, that's built into it, so. So this ordinance cannot go longer than sixty days. I don't know if there are any other questions on this.
Mr. Vice President, I will make the motion on the first non-emergency, just to set the public hearing for that, for the, for the permanent ordinance.
Okay, so there is a motion on the floor. Again, this is for the permanent change to six oh two, section six zero two point one one. Uh the public hearing would be November ninth at seven P M. Is there discussion? Councilwoman Wood, go ahead.
Um, thank you, Vice President Hussein. Um, President Spatafor, this is for clarification. The changes that the uh City Attorney made to the emergency ordinance that we're looking at passing tonight, um did you want those same changes um in setting the public hearing for the non-emergency? If you do, you're gonna need to um move it as a substitute.
Yeah, I, I did. I know it's an important change, but I don't think it matters for the purposes of the public hearing. We would just change that as we go through the committee process.
Okay, I just, just wanna make sure that I understand what you're looking at.
Yeah, the fewer roll call votes this evening, the better.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else? Seeing none, Clerk Swob, would you take the roll?
Mr. Vice President, I think Councilmember Jackson.
Yep, Brian Jackson's. Yeah, I'm sorry, Councilmember Jackson, your hand went up just as I was getting ready to say that. Uh, Councilmember Jackson, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice President. Um so I made a mistake last time, you know, I just, and I, it was kind of bothering me because um I don't think I can, I can support a public hearing, but as of now, I probably can't support um having our police officers and our courts and everybody basically have to get involved with the public health. It is important, but I would just hope that we can eventually find a different enforcement mechanism. So I'll support a hearing, but I probably, as of now, um just can't in good conscious support involving our Lansing Police Department to just do more than they're already doing. Thank you.
All right, fantastic. Um I'm gonna wait extra long this time. Is there anybody else before I call for the roll? All right, Clerk Swob, I think we're set this time. Go ahead.
Okay, Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
A A zero N A's. The resolution setting the public hearing is adopted. Okay, so now for the emergency ordinance.
President Spatafor.
Uh, I need to. Oh, right, you need to move it in, okay.
Uh, the Committee of the Whole introduced an emergency ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan, to amend the Lansing Codified Ordinances Code by amending chapter six oh two, section six oh two point one one, to prevent disease, prolong life, and promote public health by providing for enforcement of state and local health orders or regulations issued pursuant to the Michigan Public Health Code being met nineteen seventy-eight P A three sixty-eight as amended, M C L uh three thirty-three point eleven oh one at sec to provide for penalties for willful violation of such orders or regulations with personal knowledge as a misdemeanor or upon being informed of such order or regulation by a law enforcement officer as a civil infraction. The ordinance is read a first time by its title, and given that it's an emergency order, we will proceed to the second reading and vote for final passage. Uh, we have a, an emergency ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan, to amend the Lansing Codified Ordinances Code by amending chapter six oh two, section six oh two point one one, to prevent disease, prolong life, and promote public health by providing for enforcement of state and local health orders or regulations issued pursuant to the Michigan Public Health Code being nineteen seventy-eight P A, nineteen seventy-eight P A three sixty-eight as amended, M C L, three thirty-three point eleven oh one at sec to provide for penalties for willful violation of such orders or regulations with personal knowledge as a misdemeanor or upon being informed of such order or regulation by a law enforcement or officer as a civil infraction is read a second time by its title. The ordinance was reported from the Committee of the Whole and is on the order of immediate passage.
Okay, take a breath and a drink of water. President Spatafor, go ahead.
Yes, I would uh move the substitute, correct?
Yes. Yeah, so first on the substitute, uh there has been a motion for the discussion. Uh Clerk Swob, please take the roll.
On the substitution, Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Member Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
No.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Seven years, one day, uh the substitute is adopted.
All right, I move the ordinance.
Right, on the ordinance, is there further discussion? Hearing none, Clerk, uh Clerk Swob, go ahead.
On passage of the ordinance, Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jackson.
No.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Seven years, one day, the ordinance is adopted um and will be effective upon publication.
Mr. Vice President.
President Spatafor, go ahead.
I just wanna verify, Mr. Clerk, we don't need to move for immediate effect on an emergency ordinance, is that correct?
That's my understanding, but I think.
Looks like Jim's, Jim's checking the charter.
I, I think that's the whole point.
Right, yes.
It has to be passed by.
Yes.
I'm sorry, we do need to move for immediate effect?
Yeah.
I would move for immediate effect, Mr. Vice President.
All right, there is a motion on the floor for the discussion. Uh, seeing none, Clerk Swob, go ahead.
On immediate effect for the ordinance, Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
No.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Seven years, one day, immediate effect is ordered.
Thank you.
We're to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. Um so please begin raising your hands. Um and it'll have a few minutes as we go through the referrals, and then we will um allow people to continue raising their hand up until the first speaker finishes. So this is uh where you get three minutes to talk on any city government-related matter.
Mr. Clerk, before you move on to the next thing that's gonna take quite a while, Councilmember Dunbar.
Okay, guys, um I am super sorry for asking you to do this, but I, I wanna do a reconsideration. I was unfortunately not paying attention as I should have, um and I voted yes on something that I completely did not mean to vote yes on. And I, and I think you, you're gonna know what that is. We just went through this whole thing of changing the way that our police um engaged the public and made seatbelt stops like a not a pretense, and I am, I am so mad at myself that I, I pulled a yes out of my mouth on that one. I thought we were further down. I, I don't know what, I was looking at the wrong spe- spot on the agenda. Um but there is no way that I would accept funding for, for giving our officers a reason to pull someone over just for a seatbelt violation. Um so I don't know how we need to do that, but if we could do a reconsideration, or at least, you know, acknowledge that my vote should have been a no.
Uh, it's my understanding you're moving to reconsider the uh DUI uh traffic enforcement grant?
Yeah.
Um so there is a motion before us. Before we vote, is there discussion on, Mr. Clerk, am I doing this right? I want, okay. Before we vote, I want, is, is there discussion on this? I, I just have one point of clarification, uh Council, Councilmember Dunbar, and you, you're entitled to your vote however you want. Seatbelts are a primary offense, not one of the secondary offenses that was eliminated in the policy change. I don't know that that changes the, the intention behind your motion to reconsider, but um s- seatbelts and those types of safety things, we're talking, he was talking about like taillights and, and uh things hanging from the mirror, seatbelts, so car seats, seatbelts, DUI, those were all primary offenses that did not change in the policy changes. But that, I just wanted to add that, so if there's further discussion, I will be quiet now.
Appreciate that comment. I'll, I'm still gonna stick with my no.
Fair enough. Proper motion before us is to reconsider, as I try to find where it is, item.
Six B.
Six B.
On the reconsideration, Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
A A zero N A's, the uh resolution is reconsidered, so a motion is now pending for adoption of the resolution.
All right, so there's a motion before us now, Mr. Clerk, okay. Uh any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Betts.
No.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Oh.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Sorry, yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Six years, two days, the resolution is adopted.
Thank you. We need a motion for items to be considered being read and followed, that the proper referrals be made by the president, Mr. Vice President.
You made that easy, so moved.
Very good. Uh, no further discussion, Mr. Clerk, please call that roll.
On the referrals, Councilmember Betts.
Random.
Councilmember.
Yes.
Member Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
A A zero N A's, that is adopted, so we have reports of city officers, boards, and commissions. We have letters from the city clerk regarding the force um uh commissions.
Um place it in file.
Grant acceptance, Center for Tech and Civic Life.
Uh place on file, we took action on that this evening.
Board of Water and Light Audit.
Uh Committee of the Whole. And place on file.
Twenty twenty oh five.
Uh Committee of the Whole, place on file.
Um letters from the mayor, Form-based code ordinance.
Development plan.
Grant X, we have two grant, uh grant acceptance for treasury, public safety, and coronavirus relief.
Ways and Means.
Uh grant acceptance for DUI uh.
Place on file.
Grant acceptance, Victims of Crime Act, and Grant Acceptance Stop Violence, and Grant Acceptance twenty twenty eleven Hazard, and Grant Acceptance, Michigan State Police Automobile Theft.
Ways and Means.
Uh donation acceptance for Ron Steica golf outing and for Ingham County Trails and Parks Village.
Ways and Means.
Outside legal counsel.
Committee of the Whole.
Three reappointments for the Capital Area District Library and Transportation Authority and Airport Authority.
Intergovernmental Relations.
Reappointments for the uh L D F A and Saginaw Street Corridor Improvement Authority.
Development and Planning.
Appointments uh to the Employees Retirement Board Trustees.
Uh Committee of the Whole.
Appointment to the Board of Public Service.
Uh, public service.
Uh, accepting joint representation for the, from Clark Hill.
Put it on file.
Uh, emergency ordinance six oh two.
Place on file. Oh, I'm sorry, um, no, yeah, place on file.
Um and, and ordinance to uh promote health. The non-emergency ordinance.
Yeah, um public safety.
Uh lease agreements, Lansing Shuffle Board.
Committee of the Whole.
A grant acceptance sobriety.
Ways and. Ways and Means.
Uh, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight sole source purchase notifications.
Ways and Means.
And uh three grant repet- requests from the Natural Resources Trust Fund.
Ways and Means.
And the appointment of Guillermo Lopez to the Board of Police Commissioners.
Public Safety.
We have a letter from President Spatafor uh amendment to the marijuana ordinance.
Development and Planning.
Communications and petitions, we have two claim appeals.
General Services.
Uh, communications in support of Black Lives Matter.
Equity, Diversity, Inclusion.
And uh communications in opposition to. And communications in opposition to the format of our Zoom meetings.
Place that on file.
And communications in opposition to Board of Water and Light appointments.
Place on file.
Notices from the Liquor Control Commission, we have two.
Both to General Services.
And additional claim appeal.
General Services.
We are to remarks by councilmembers.
I have just a couple of things to say before I open up to others. Just real quick, folks. We are engaged with City IT and the City Clerk's Office for a new plugin for our website, which will make a compilation of agendas for committee meetings and city council much more efficient, still allowing paper options for those who like paper, but it should increase the paperless options for those of us who are relying on internet, in particular as we're going into virtual. But one of the other features that comes with is something that I know many of you have been asking for, for probably close to a decade. And that is the ability to display vote counts on the screen for those in the room when we go back to the room behind me or when we're virtual to be able to display it on the city TV feed. And that will allow us to do votes through a secure system and vote on issues that come before the council and have those vote tallies. We're implementing the software. We do not plan to have it operational for the full city council until the new term in January. That was a request from the Clerk's Office because they've got a little bit going on right now. But we're going to try and have some of the committees try, do a trial run. It integrates with the calendar on the website so that all the agendas are right there on the websites. When you click on the events, it's very streamlined. It was a sole source thing because it's already the vendor that does the Civic Plus stuff for us, but that is going to be something that comes into play very soon for the committees, then the full council, hopefully, when the gavel gets handed away for me next year. So just wanted you all to know that was coming. And then the last thing I need to let you all know is we are now below our, if we stick to our schedule, we are below the charter mandated number of meetings a year. So I'm going to probably confer with the Vice President and see if there's a reason to call maybe a special meeting rather than a full council meeting, just to have a council meeting. If there is an issue that we need to address or could address separately, we may do that. And it may end up being the Public Safety Ordinance on Health or something along those lines. But I just wanted you all to know that when a meeting gets added to your calendar, it is out of charter obligation, not because I want to force you all to meet with me one more time this year. So just so that was on your radar coming up. Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, President Spatafor. I have been working for over thirty years on civic issues within this community and for the last twenty years on council. There are very few times during this period of time that I have been embarrassed to be a council member. And this is one of them. Listening to the plight of a number of city retirees that have come forward to discuss the changes that they are being forced to deal with at this time has been heart wrenching. Currently, we are sitting here because of COVID, which has a huge effect on the senior population. Let alone the fact that this population is now having to look at changes in their healthcare, which may or may not because none of us have been fully briefed on how it will affect these retirees, have an effect on them both financially, physically and mentally. We have listened over and over again to the depression, about the depression that our senior population is going through, having to deal with COVID and this pandemic that they are in and the fear that they have. We we as a city have added to that. We have made choices and made their lives intolerable at this particular point. We have made promises over the years when we have negotiate, when contracts have been negotiated to employees. And I have heard over and over again from legal, as well as from unions, as well as from the administration, that we do not bargain for retirees. But every contract that is negotiated is negotiated with benefits that will affect these retirees. So in retrospect, we are negotiating for retirees. We have made promises. We as a body, I have sat through two targeted incentives since I've been on council and promises have been made to these people. We have people that have left under disability. We have people that have made life altering choices on moving forward based on what they thought they were going to get. There isn't one of us here that doesn't understand that we have a dilemma dealing with our underfunding for retiree healthcare. We get that. It's not that we don't understand that. But as some have said that have spoke to us in ways and means, have spoke on Facebook, who have sent in letters to the State Journal. This is something that we've all known that there was a debt out there. It is now booked because of Gatsby on our books. But it's no different than is if you have a house. You are making payments on a monthly basis. You know that you've got that money per month. Or you and, and then somebody knocks on your door and says to you, I need it all at once. That, that's not what's being said to us. We know that we're working toward that. There have been changes. These, the unions that are represented here, along with the retirees and the employees are willing to sit down at the table and negotiate this. I do not understand when we have had firms that have, we've done RFPs on, we've gone through all of these gyrations to get to where we are with no discussion to counsel unless there's one of you out there that have had discussions with the administration. We were not aware of these things until they came to light. This is just totally unfair to a population right now. I do not know why we cannot wait until July, until the new fiscal year to take a look at how we can come up with different ways to look at revisions, bringing people to the table to discuss this. Today, I again stress, I am so ashamed of where we are and how we have dealt with the people who have served us. Served each and every one of us, have served the community out here. Risking their lives, working countless hours in the snow, picking up trash. And today, this is how we say thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilmember Wood. I wasn't, I'm not to speak on that. I think she said, well, I think the bottom line, if I would say anything, is just transparency. And, you know, as a council member, you know, I would have appreciated a heads up. I don't, I'm sure that other council members would have as well. And it's upsetting and it is unfortunate. Segue into that, again, I'm still asking for an update on the lawsuit, the I Can't Breathe lawsuit that was just filed from apparent death in our jails on April eleventh. Listen, you know, here's my deal. And this is not just this issue, it's another issue. You know, we're all supposed to be on the same team. We're all supposed to be working together. We're all supposed to be on the same team. It's difficult and it's frustrating to me when I hear about things from an alert in the newspaper. Whether it's this issue, whether it's you know, the fire chief retiring, whether we've appointed a new fire chief, I don't care what it is. But when council has to hear about it, you know, from a reporter calling or the newspaper, you know, it, it, it prevents us from being effective and it prevents us from providing service to our constituents. And it's, it's disrespectful. And we're supposed to be, you know, again, on the same team. We're supposed to be transparent. That was a commitment made on both sides. And there have been a number of examples where that commitment hasn't been kept. And, you know, the retiree thing is, in my mind, decisions have to be made. I get that. And we're living in tough times, but it's about transparency. It's about, you know, being straight with people. I, I, as a council member, and I'm only going to speak for myself, I should not have to hear about that from a reporter calling me, asking me about a letter that the retirees sent out. I don't even, I don't even understand how that happens. But here we are. So I am requesting, I'm requesting a couple of things. I am requesting that we get an update on the litigation. The I Can't Breathe is what they're calling it in the newspaper. And I also request that we get an update, and this is off topic, but we get an update from LEAP on the small business loans that were issued. We were supposed to have, we were supposed to have an update about that, the loans that were issued. And we're not getting an update about that. I just irritates me that I have to ask. It does, particularly when we've already asked and now I have to ask again and again, it's irritating. So those are, you know, I do request an update on the lawsuit. And I do request an update on the small business loans that were issued on September. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley. I will, as I mentioned, the front of the meeting, I know you're just recapping. I'll reach out and make sure we can get legal to give us a brief on the lawsuit, particularly suspended. Mr. Smirka, if you'd like to address that.
We were not served with the lawsuit. It was given to a newspaper before, we couldn't even get it out of the district court. It was not served. It was given to a newspaper before even the district court could report it being filed. I think we were served today. I don't know if we can, you know, we can guess when a plaintiff is going to file a lawsuit and if they're going to go to the news media before they serve us, what can we do about it?
Well, I, I, and I, Jim, I would, I would accept that you didn't. I got, I cannot believe that we were not asked for any type of quote or comment from the Lansing State Journal before that stuff was posted. And whether it's from your office or anybody else's office, I'm just saying that, you know, it's, it's, it's just disturbing to me. It really is.
All right, I see no further, I'm sorry, Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I guess, you know, I want to, I kind of want to go on the same lines with Councilwoman Wood. I'm not going to go all into that. I agree with you, Councilwoman. I think that was very genuine what you said. We are in the middle of a pandemic. Is there anything that can be done to kick this can down the road? I mean, is there, has the, you know, I heard that contracts have been signed, is that true? You know, I really would hate to move forward with this if there is a chance to back out of it and possibly revisit this at the starting of the next fiscal year. I don't know if you are able to answer that as right now or not, but that's the way I feel. I mean, we shouldn't be balancing the budget on the backs of our retirees.
Hey. Let's see. Councilmember Garza. Mr. Clerk, I think that's, does it for Councilmember Comments. But you're muted though, so if you're making comments.
I'm not making comments. Moving us along, that takes us to public comment on city government related matters. Again, each speaker will have up to three minutes. And we will, after the first speaker is finished, will stop allowing additional speakers to sign up. I do see we have a large number of speakers sign up. So the first speaker is calling user one, followed by Paul Colgrove, so calling user one.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, we paid our dues. I'm a City of Lansing retiree. My name is Carol Walton. And I'm asking that you not touch our healthcare fund. I want you to pay back to us what the city stole from us. You just take, 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 and we paid this already. You all elect, you were elected, you walk in here for a few years, rob the city blind and then leave richer and with a better lifetime taxpayer paid benefit package than anyone who put in their minimum twenty-five years in their personal cash. You, Mr. Mayor, came in new to this game and are talking about taking our money yet again. Take retiree healthcare off the table, get your grant writers, buy some city property back, clean up this place so people will want to come back here and spend their money or sell the Board of Water and Light. Retiree salaries are set. We don't get raises to keep up with you taking money from our healthcare fund. You find that funding elsewhere or you can reimburse each of us the total amount of money we put in and we'll manage our own healthcare fund separate from the city so you can all can no longer steal from our savings account. If you're not capable of securing other funding or finding ways to fund city services without stealing from retirees, yes, I said stealing because you did this without informing city council or the actual retirees. And just step down and let someone more qualified take your position. We can't afford to lose more money for your on the job training. I know, since it's so easy for you to play with other people's money, take your personal stocks, bonds, checking savings and 401K and donate that money monthly towards balancing the city budget. So you could be the first to experience what it feels like to have someone strip away your life savings. That four to ten percent annual raise you all give yourselves could have been used towards balancing the budget. If you're so worried about the budget, take the same sacrifices we did. Start by chopping thirty percent off your salary and eight hours off your work week and stop giving yourself annual raises. We didn't get raises for years. We retired our raise, start at the top. The retiree healthcare fund is not a rainy day fund to be used when the city is in crisis. Stop using our savings to fix your issues. We paid into it trusting would be there for retirees, not to make up any type of city deficit. The city isn't just giving us a lifetime of free healthcare. We paid for it. We are the annual, we're the annual actuaries to show not only retirees, but the public where our savings is going. To the Lansing residents, I was born here. I still live here. I hope you can now see that our leaders are doing to the senior citizens who served you for over twenty-five years. And you step up to help us by writing, calling, emailing the mayor and helping us to stop him from taking money from our healthcare fund. Our healthcare is not free. We don't get raises and this cut will bankrupt us. Make him keep the promises he ran on. Today's healthcare crisis may be due to policy decisions made years ago, but it's incumbent to find current policymakers to turn that tide and make our system sustainable. We didn't create this mess. As a matter of fact, our suggestions to sustain our dues, parks and our services community fell on deaf ears and all we could do was watch as our prior administrations ripped our beautiful city apart dollar by dollar, selling off our services and property. Where do the millions of dollars on those sales go? Where is this, why is the city still in dire financial straits? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Paul Colgrove, followed by Edward Osmar. And again, we're stopped.
Are we on?
New hands. Paul, you.
Are we on?
Yes.
Great. First off, thank you very much, Carol Woods, for your comments. We appreciate those. There are some things that everyone I think should remember. I served the Lansing Fire Department for twenty-five. I served the Lansing Fire Department for 25 years and 29 days. On part of that time, I was also on a negotiation committee. Let us be clear, we negotiated for our retirement. We turned down real wage and real money to fund our healthcare system for our retirees. You have to remember, every union bargains for their retirees. What we can't do is what Mayor Shore figured out. We can't protect our retirees once they retire. And Mayor Shore has taken accurate advantage of that. He's cut off the vulnerable people who are there without protection. We gave real money. We even pre-funded in the late 90s about four to six millions from our pension fund into healthcare retiree funding. So I'd like to know where that money is. And by the way, if you accept that grant for the DUIL for the police department, and part of that money goes in to their pension system, and you cut their pension system, you might want to ask Mr. Smirka if that's not fraud. That money is meant to go to that system, and it should stay in there. Moves like what Shore is doing is fraud and stealing from a system. I can tell you now that in the 25 years and 29 days, part of what I donated to the city was two shoulder injuries, three back injuries, a right hip that needed to be replaced due to a fall from a roof during a fire. I know that I have four times the rate of cancer the normal population. I know that my wife is also prediabetic. Part of us, our timing in retirement, was based on the fact that we knew our healthcare was secure. No one has ever touched retiree healthcare. We use that and we bargain for that. We gave you 29 years, or 25 years and 29 days. And I want everyone to know that Mayor Shore, he and he alone went out in the dark of night and betrayed every retiree that is there. And I think everyone should consider that in his reelection. He took our healthcare, he took our confidence, he took our trust. It's hard to have faith in a man who will touch those who cannot protect themselves. I appreciate what everyone has done as a council, and it was an honor to serve you for 25 years and 29 days. I am sorry we have to have this conversation. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you. Next, we have Edward Osmar, followed by Mary Hem Street.
Hello. Hi, I'm a 71-year-old retiree that now lives in Florida. I retired in 98. I happen to have a friend of mine who was also a retiree that said, check Facebook. You might be interested in what's going on. And I found out what you're doing to my supplementary retire, retired, I don't know, medical. My question is, has the City of Lansing decided to call all retirees and tell them what's happening? Or is there going to be a bunch of us that suddenly show up on November finding out that we don't have what we had the day before? I just, I, I have not yet seen anything on what I'm supposed to receive after January 1st. Right now, I'm getting all kinds of letters saying, it's time to change. You should look at this program or that program to find out what you should have for supplementary income or supplementary medical. At the moment, what am I supposed to do? Sit back and wait till January and you say, this is what you have, you're stuck with it, sucker? You know, when are you going to send me something that says, this is what we're going to give you? If you want to opt out, these are your options. At least give me some chance ahead of time to at least try to plan what my life is going to turn out like. My other question is, it seems like it's all union people that have got hit. Are the retired mayors, the retired people that were non-union, have their supplementary medical been cut also? Or is this just us, the rest of you get to keep yours? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mary Hem Street, followed by Mark Parker.
Hello, thank you for letting me speak, and Carol Wood, thank you for the heartfelt feelings. My husband was a Lansing police officer for over 25 years. Some injuries were sustained during that time. But more importantly, he negotiated time, personal time away. He negotiated raises away. He negotiated vacation time away to provide for insurance coverage in his retirement. That was one of the reasons that he stayed on the Lansing Police Department for as many years as he did. He loved his job. I'm sure when you talk to any of the police retirees, as well as the fire retirees, they all loved what they do and they do it again in a heartbeat if they could. But this is pulling the rug out from a lot of people. I don't know the exact numbers, but I know how dangerous it is to people with current medical conditions, when you have to pay $1,500 a year for your deductible and you have to pay $30 a visit if you do one or two visits a week. That, and that's not inconceivable. That's going to affect people's lifestyle. It's going to affect many, many aspects of their life. It's very, very dangerous. Additionally, I don't understand how one person has that much power to unilaterally decide the lifestyle changes that are going to have to be made for this amount of people. I don't understand how one person can break contracts like Mr. Shore has done. I do believe there's some room for litigation in there someplace. I'm a retired nurse, not a lawyer, so I don't know, but it sounds very, very unstable to me. I don't know if there's fines involved for breaking the contract with United Behavioral or fines if he breaks the contract with whatever the new group, Humana. So thank you for hearing me, and as a council member, I would be very, very concerned about Mr. Shore's actions, how he pulled the rug out from under all of the retirees, as well as the city council. I'm afraid to say this, and please don't misinterpret it, but he made you all look like fools. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Mark Parker, followed by Mary Stevens.
Hello, yes, my name is Mark Parker. I'm a resident of Lansing's First Ward. Spent 30 years working at the city, the last five of them at the wastewater plant. I would like to thank Carol Wood and the rest of the council for taking our our issue very seriously. And Carol, I know you didn't, you didn't have to say the things that you did, but you did. It was very heartfelt, and I, and I appreciate that. I'm grateful for that. I would like to point out, one of the, one of the big problems with designing reductions to a healthcare system by using an outside contractor. What happens is these, these contractors sort of just put everybody in the same boat. But, but there's a problem there because in healthcare, the older a person is, the more likely they are to have to use their healthcare, the more, the more likely they are to get cancer, the more likely they are to, to have cardiovascular problems, serious ones. And, and the problem is, is that by, by just sort of doing this, sort of this cookie-cutter approach, it, it really hits the most vulnerable, oldest members of this retiree group the most, because they do tend to use their healthcare the most. So I just wanted to bring that up. There's a lot of other opinions here, so I'll just let people go and, and talk about their situation. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Mary Stevens, followed by Stan Shuck.
Hi, my name's Mary Stevens. I'm a retiree from Lansing Police Department, served 25 years. And I was a union rep, helped negotiate one of our contracts. Like many people have mentioned, we gave up cash in hand. We gave up not pushing for more vacation time, for more holidays, in order to secure our healthcare. We thought we were doing the right thing. We were negotiating good faith. My message is mainly for Mayor Shore, since he doesn't seem to want to talk to us. Here's the deal, you're a politician. You're going to run for office again. You have just, if you go through with this, you will have armed your opponent with a virtual army of volunteers who will help campaign against you and make sure you are not elected to anything. We are retirees. We have plenty of time on our hands. We have time to go out and do these things, to campaign and to help anybody that wants to run against you for whatever position. If you think we will forget about this, you're wrong, because we will get reminders every time we fill a prescription, every time we go to a doctor, every time we have a medical procedure. Those things aren't going to go away, and we are not going to forget. And I might point out, seniors are the liable voters out there. And who is, who are they going to side with? Who are they going to be able to relate to? You or us? It's going to be us, because they are going to be, they are in that boat, too. You know, what you're doing is basically stealing stuff that we negotiated for in good faith. You did it without any transparency, with a great deal of secrecy. And frankly, you should be ashamed of yourself. There's still time for you to withdraw this and to work with us. We, we have always negotiated in the past. We have always shown good faith in trying to help the city, but this time, we weren't asked. Nobody came to us, nobody tried to do anything. Just pulled the rug out from under our feet, and it's inexcusable. And don't think for a second, we won't be campaigning for anybody against you if you go through with this. Thank you very much, and I appreciate the council taking the time to listen to us.
Thank you. Next, we have Stan Shuck, followed by Amy Rydel.
Yeah, hi, Stan Shuck. I worked for the city for, you know, 34 years altogether. I was a union rep for, for most of my years, negotiated contracts. I don't remember ever having a contract in the city where concessions weren't given for this very reason, to, to help the city fund the healthcare. And those, those savings weren't just a one-time savings, they're compounded. You're still saving on those concessions today. We gave up wages, we gave up benefits in the millions of dollars. And unfortunately, like Mr. Garza mentioned, kicked the can down the road. That's what, that's what has been done. And there, there's plenty of blame to go around. It's been, it's been kicked down the road for, for decades. You know, at negotiations, when we asked for the language, I'll never forget the, the response. Is it, is it worth dying on the cross for? Well, apparently it is, because that's what we're doing. We're all dying on the cross now. You got, you got all these seniors, these people that have hurt themselves, that have sacrificed so much, like Carol mentioned, so graciously. You know, myself, I worked 19 Christmases in a row without my family. My family went for 19 years without me here for Christmas. And where was I at? Serving the public, making sure things were handled. And, and this is what we get. And then you come forth with the incentive, where we signed over our 401Ks as well, to buy time. Cost me $10,000 for 40 days to meet your criteria, your criteria. Not ours, your criteria. We met that. And why did we do that? We did that for you. We did that for the taxpayers. We did that for the liabilities. And now we're being stabbed in the back once again. I'm not real sure that the City of Lansing has ever negotiated a contract in good faith in all the 34 years that I worked there. From the furlough days that were imposed eight days after ratification, there's just, there's just example after example of negotiating in bad faith and violating your contracts blatantly. And I'm sure that this will end up in litigation. That's a real simple question, and it's yes or no. Is there a contract signed or is there not? Because if there is, the only possible solution is litigation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Amy Rydel, followed by Gandy, which I believe is Michael Lynn. Go ahead, Amy.
Hi, thanks for the opportunity to speak. I retired in 2012 from Lansing Police Department with just under 14 years of service with an on-duty injury. My husband is currently an LPD employee with just over 22 years of service. My brother-in-law is currently also with LPD, and my brother is retired from LFD. We've obviously been through several contracts, none of which have ever been with retiree benefits touched. My family's always taken great pride in the city, and that's obviously shown through our public service and our dedication to the City of Lansing. And like all LPD and LFD, we've given up so many nights, days, holidays with one another and our kids. Everyone's worked long shifts, overtime, both voluntary and forced, something that we've obviously gone through. And a lot of things that we don't forget are different traumas, horrific murders, child rapes, rescued victims pulled from burning buildings, numerous crimes, just to name a few. Those visions don't go away. Mr. Shore, I want you to understand that mental health, physical health of officers, especially whether it's LFD or LPD, is super important and something that is very important that will never be the same. Our bodies and our minds have suffered over the years, more than you can imagine. And one thing that we need to absolutely have is the ability to keep our minds and our bodies in good health. My injuries caused me to be a completely different person, different spouse, different parent, different friend, and just an overall different person, and obviously not for the better. Something that I would hate to see as an outcome of your decision is for an officer, whether it be LPD or LFD, is to get sent to a Chuck Welfare, a suicidal subject or a DOA call, arrive on scene and have it be a retiree who couldn't afford their depression or anxiety medication, or maybe didn't go to counseling because they had to ration their money for groceries that month and had to go without because they couldn't get the help they needed. Think about that. The cycle's going to continue, and they're going to have less opportunity to get help. One thing that's attracted me personally, or that did to the city, was the opportunity for growth during my career that was not only during the career itself, but after retirement. I ask you, Mr. Shore, just to reconsider your decision and these drastic, the drastic changes that you're, you're preparing to make to our healthcare. And just in closing, think of this. What would you do if this was your spouse, your brother, your sister, or one of your parents in our shoes? I'm pretty sure that your solution would be much different. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is screen name Propagandy, I think is Michael Lynn, followed by Susan Rose.
Hello. First, I wanted to talk about the fact that we can't see Mayor Shore. You should stand at attention to hear these retirees speak on their issues. The fact that you took this down to SWAC and the video, people to make this the way this Zoom is now today, so you don't have to stand there and squirm like you do every week is embarrassing. You should be embarrassed, but I'm going to move on. The death that keeps being talked about is Anthony Hulan, who died in the city jail on April 11th. And the question I believe Patricia Spitz is asking is, why didn't we know about this? Not, why did we not know about the lawsuit? Why did nobody know that we had somebody die in the city jail by the hands of city jail workers? That's the biggest problem here. Now, we've rallied for George Floyd around the city. Not once did this come up in conversation, and you all killed somebody in the jail, literally handcuffed and smushed the breath out of him in our own jail? You can know you're going to deal with something regarding that. We all know now when we coming for that ass. Secondly, I do want to give credit to SWAC in their video, start their video place down there, because they are amazing. Dominic Cochran, I went through their course this weekend, and it was an absolute amazing course on video editing that I'm absolutely going to use to open your ass up, Propagandy. Just so you know, we need to understand, too, the mayor's administration is hella, hella involved in this. So let's not just say it's Andy Shore. It's Samantha Harkins, it's Linda Sanchez, it's Nick Tate, it's Elizabeth O'Leary. All of them down there are responsible for this issue. Andy Shore's not bright enough, courageous enough, smart enough to sit in any Andy Shore's not bright enough, courageous enough, smart enough to sit in any room and do all this by himself. So remember all of those names when it comes down to it. I can tell you all retirees, we will need your help, because we're working very, very hard to make sure Andy Shore doesn't run for election in any city, state, government, in any issue. He can't even run for school board or a school president at this point in time. We will be on his head. I wanna further on state. You know, defunding the police has been a big topic as of late, but one thing even us that are asking to defund and reinvest in our community has said and stated over and over again, is we will not touch legacy costs. I wanna say that again. We're gonna defund, but we're never gonna touch legacy costs. That's retirees, healthcare. So as much as you may think and believe that we're the devil, what do we think about Andy Shore? Even if he was to pull this back, and his administration didn't sign that contract, you all must be aware. Never forget, he tried it. He tried it. So throughout all of this discussion and all of the stories, and I feel every one of your guys is paying. And one day, when I retire from here, it'll affect me, too. I'm currently fighting the city in, in, in court and litigation right now for my own PTSD issues, just like the lady before me stated. Remember, he tried it regardless. I'll see you all Thursday. Andy Shore's house, Mayor Shore's.
Thank you. Next, we have Susan Rouse followed by Julia Kramer. Susan Rouse.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you for taking the time tonight. Name is Durow LPD. I served the city of Lansing for twenty-five years. At the start of this meeting tonight, the council members began remembering specific individuals and asking for prayers for others that they shared stories of. And I would like the council to remember and pray for the human capital resource that works for and retired from the city of Lansing. In the field of public service, your municipality is nothing without your employees. While the retirees' time of service has ended, their relationship with the city of Lansing has not. There are many retirees with exceptional medical needs, some who struggle already to make ends meet financially. Many of the thirteen hundred retirees have lifelong injuries that they will continue to live with for the rest of their time here. There is currently an attack on retiree benefits. It was perpetrated in secret by the mayor, never speaking with employees, council members, or union representatives. It should also be noted, this comes at a point during a global pandemic, which some experts say will impact us well into two thousand and twenty-two. An individual right now should not be concerned about their healthcare benefits being placed in jeopardy at a time like this. I would like to sincerely ask each member on the council, if you support any part of the mayor's underhanded, behind-the-back action in attempting to violate collective bargaining agreements, which were signed in good faith and were previously approved by the city council, do you support the city and its employees violating union contracts, even if it's done through complicit inaction? Also, if you don't support this action, what have you done individually or collectively as a council to stop the action, address it, or find an alternate solution? What actions is the council taking to change the environment of secrecy in regards to Mayor Shore? What other line items or assets has the council looked at to address the funding of retiree healthcare besides placing it on the back of the retirees? If this goes through going forward, how will the city ever attract quality employees that see the city of Lansing as a place for a career, especially in high-risk fields such as law enforcement, or fire, or heavy physical jobs in the city where injury is often likely when the city is not willing to stand by its employees' contracts and its retirees? It's hard to believe that some people that I previously knew and worked side by side with would be qualified as vulnerable. As we age, our needs increase, and sometimes our capacity diminishes. Our oldest and most vulnerable retirees will suffer the most, both financially and with the loss of benefits. The mayor, you have the power to reverse his proposed changes to retiree healthcare. Mayor Shore, please stop what you're doing and refrain from violating our contracts, and stop meeting with outside companies in secret to do this. Thank you for your time, and I hope you have a nice night.
Thank you. Next is Julia Kramer, and then it'll be Sarah Morrison.
Yo, this is wild. I don't wanna distract from this at all. I love everyone who has spoken. Y'all are brilliant. I support you. That's it. I don't need to say anything else.
Thank you. Next is Sarah Morrison, followed by Tom Cochran. Sarah Morrison.
Chris, that's another person who has said they had to be promoted to panelist. They must be using an outdated version of Zoom.
Okay.
But I, I did promote them, but it seems like they can't talk.
Okay. Sarah, can you talk? I guess not. Okay. If you wanna try calling in, we can with, with one of the phone numbers, we can try to get you on. But we'll go ahead to Tom Cochran and Sherry Wegman.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you all. Thank you for the, what you do, and thank you for being here. Carol, thank you for all your kind words. Carol and I didn't always agree on everything, but I always found her to be very honest and forthright. Now, this is unconscionable, what's taking place. My family has over a hundred years of service to the city of Lansing and public safety. This isn't just about the police and fire. This is about all city workers, all the retirees, the people that, that man the dust, the people that plow, the people that pick up the trash. It's about all of us. I sat on both sides of the table in negotiating contracts in good faith, and it's been said time and time again. There were many times that we gave up raises, many times that we gave up benefits to better our healthcare, to better our retiree benefits. And it was done sitting across the table from very learned people, people that had probably better knowledge of the financial condition of the city than, than we as union members did. I, I also served on the pension board. I served as, for ten years on the pension board, served as a chair at the end of my tenure on the pension board. And at the time, the pension was a hundred percent funded at that time. And as, as said earlier, we had given up monies, and there were monies that were given, and that were put towards the funding of healthcare, the pre-funding of healthcare. You know, I, I find it just unbelievable that this is taking place because, you know, I, I served with Andy Shore in the State House. And, you know, time and time again, he talked about transparency. And I think this is just, again, it's unconscionable to think that this has been done. This is why people don't like politicians. This is done in the back room, smoke-filled, you know, done behind people's backs, behind, behind your backs as council member. You're elected to represent the citizens of Lansing, and this is being done without your input. It's my understanding that, that there were contract negotiations that were taking place just within the last year, where they were willing to give up and, and negotiate for healthcare, and they were not even, that was not even considered. You know, I, I myself, as, as many others have suffered injuries. I, I suffered a back injury that I had to have surgery, and I was off. It was a duty injury. I was able to work through that and, and work hard in the program that we worked with Sparrow Hospital and creating. And, and again, I was able to come back to work. I spent twenty-nine and a half years at the fire department, working my way up through the ranks as a firefighter, as a paramedic. And I'm gonna share something that I've not ever shared before. And, and this is just, I, I can only speak to my story, but my story is the same story as others on the city of Lansing. Whether they, again, worked at a desk, whether they plowed snow, picked up trash, whether they were our police officers, or, or firefighters. In the course of my career, I contracted hepatitis C. It was, it was an exposure that I had as a paramedic riding an ambulance. And fortunately, I was able to, to take the interferon program and became non-detectable. And I've not shared that with anyone. Very few people know that. But my only reason, the only reason I mention that is because that my story is just one small piece of the story of the employees of the city of Lansing. Time and time again, there are many that are on disability. There are many that have suffered physical ailments. There are many have suffered mental ailments. We, we did the job that you didn't want, that you wouldn't want to do. The things that we were exposed to physically and physiologically during the course of our careers is not anything that any of you have chose to do. You know, we did that because we cared about the citizens of Lansing. I was born and raised in Lansing and spent forty years. I'm, I'm no longer a resident of Lansing, but my heart belongs to Lansing as my family, again, over a hundred years of service to public safety. I have an aunt who was the first female patrol officer.
Representative Cochran, I'm sorry to interrupt. Your time has expired.
Have a good day. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, we have Sherry Wegman followed by Farhan. Did Sherry remove herself? Oh, yeah, Sherry.
No, I'm here.
Okay. Good, Sherry.
Okay, um, first of all, thank, thank you for the opportunity to address the council. Carol, thank you for what you had to say. I think you echoed perfectly what the retirees are feeling. There's one thing I wanna point out that is legal, and, and you can check into it. The state constitution, the Michigan State Constitution, under Article Nine, Section, Section Twenty-four, talks about public pension plans and retirement systems, the obligation that the state and any political subdivision within the state has to follow. And again, I am not an attorney, but I would love to have Mr. Smurka look at that and see how the, the attempts by Mayor Shore to get rid of retiree healthcare are being compromised. Number one, why weren't the unions involved, Mayor Shore, when you started this covert action of trying to take away healthcare from retirees? I'd like an answer to that. Plus, there was no notice to Human Resources nor the city attorney about this. To me, that's a failing of the office to not have transparency with your own city council, your own department heads. And another question I have for city councils, can city council designate existing funds to help keep the collective bargaining benefits for the retirees? If the mayor goes ahead with this travesty, then I think the city council needs to, to pony up and block that move if they can. What are the checks and balances? That the mayor can do this without support of the city council, without any checks and balances? That's rogue. That you've got a rogue mayor on your hands. Number, and then does serving one's employer and retiring from that employer count for anything anymore? And then I've also read that the mayor said he was doing this because he's trying to keep the pensions secure. Well, the pensions are an issue. The police and fire pensions are independently funded. It doesn't come from the city, and they're not in any problems. I know how to read the pension benefits that are put out monthly. So I see my time is limited now, but I think the council needs to follow where the money was, where it's gone to on the RFP with Manchin in Vance. And I think we all have some work to do. And Mayor, you need to stand up and be a decent human being. Thank you.
Okay, we have Farhan. Thank you. We have Farhan Chico Marf followed by Sue. Farhan? Farhan, can you unmute yourself?
Do you guys hear me?
Yes.
No, yes.
Okay. I wanna thank you guys for answering my call and for allowing others to speak. I just wanted to say that, you know, it can no longer be a common or acceptable practice in Lansing for Andy Shore to go after our most vulnerable people. These people went to work every day and built a life for themselves. The system that was supposed to provide for them, after all these years of service, is being shot through with holes by Andy Shore. You know, it's funny how this city always goes after our retirees when we need to fix our budget. However, each year, the only people who get pay raises in the city are the city council, the mayor's office, and people in his cabinet. They're the only ones who see pay increases in the city. And yet, when it's time to fix the budget, instead of lowering their own salaries and their own benefits, and instead of, I don't know, maybe having one deputy mayor instead of three or two, maybe we would be able to fix our budget. I think, listen, I'm only twenty-five years of age. Tonight, I am advocating for our retirees, because I don't like bullies. Andy Shore is a bully, and I don't like bullies. These, these benefits don't, it doesn't affect me. I have a long way before I retire. However, I think we need to take care of our retirees. These people have put in the work. You guys have all heard their stories and what they've been through. And for us to just give them the middle finger when they need us the most, especially when there's an, when there's a global pandemic happening in this, in this, in this, in this country, when there's a coronavirus, when there's, when there's a lot of uncertainty. For this mayor to just give our retirees the middle finger, and for city council members not to challenge him, or not to ask questions, or not to stand up to him, I think it is, it's a disgrace. It is a disgrace what Andy Shore has been allowed to do. And I, I don't know, I'm just confused. Do we live in the United States, or do we live in Saudi Arabia or North Korea, where one man dictates the entire city and how the city is being run? Maybe it's time that we change the city's charter, and we allow equal power, equal balance of power. Because I am sick and tired of one man dictating the city and everyone else just being told after things are already being set. For, we have eight members on the city council, and for every one of them to say, you know what? We're not even aware of this. What's happening? How did this happen? And for them to find out on, on Facebook, or for reporters to ask them, what kind of, what kind of leadership is that? What kind of transparency is that? What kind of mayor is that? Who doesn't even work with his own city council? I think tonight, and for the past few years, Andy Shore has shown us his true colors. It is time that we take for who he is and stop trying to giving him cha-
Thank you. Your time is up. Next, we have Sue, followed by phone number Indian seven nine one. Go ahead, Sue. Sue?
Is this Sue Dyer? For Sue Dyer, or?
It just says Sue on the screen, but I think it's you.
I'm a widow of an LFD firefighter. He unexpectedly passed away at the age of forty-seven. He was three months from retirement. He suffered a stroke the morning he came home from working a twenty-four-hour shift, so it is unknown if he was, if his job related. He was always planning for the future for us. He gave up pay raises, everything, to make sure that we would be taken care of in the future with health insurance. He was aware that what can happen anytime with your health because of the field he was in. I have had two neck surgeries and a back surgery because of an auto accident. That was not my fault. I received less than $30,000 a year from his pension. If the mayor gets his way, I will be financially bankrupt in a matter of months because of the ongoing appointments that I have to go to every month because of my chronic pain suffered from the accident. How can he go against a written contract promising my husband that this family would be taken care of? Shame on you, Mayor. Are you ever gonna talk with us, or are you just gonna keep hiding? Shame on you, Mayor. Are you ever going to talk with us or are you just going to keep hiding from us? Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next we have the phone number. Um, ending in 791.
Are you there?
Uh, yes.
Hello. Hi. First of all, let me say thank you for the opportunity to speak and thank you Carol Wood for being the voice of retirees like me and those retirees who are not heard. My name's Chris Wheeler. I retired from the fire, the Lansing Fire Department in 2012. I was forced to retire early due to a debilitating and career-ending back injury. This resulted in having two back surgeries and ultimately having spinal fusion. I spent seven years trying to get into the city of Lansing Fire Department. I came here from the city of Dearborn Heights Fire Department as a firefighter, paramedic. I grew up in the Lansing area and Lansing has always been home. Part of the reason I came here from Dearborn Heights was the benefit package and the job security of being part of the fire department that protects the capital city of the state of Michigan. I gave up my back protecting the lives and property of the citizens of the city of Lansing. When I went through my, the retirement process ever, after having the career run pulled out from under me prematurely. I was assured by the city of Lansing and local 421 that I would be taken care of. Now, due to not being able to finish a full 25 year career and having step raises and moving through the ranks. And foregoing raises over the years to keep our current healthcare. The reto, the current mayor decides to increase the amount I will pay for insurance that was promised to myself and other retirees. Through good faith collective bargaining. This will create a financial burden on myself and my family that was completely unexpected. Why is the current mayor, mayoral administration able to change my contract after I was forced to retire? Wasn't Shore endorsed by the labor unions when he ran for mayor? This is a slap into the face to those who endorse Shore for mayor. Why can't city council stop this? Who on city councils in favor of this change by the mayor? City won't let me come back to the fire department in some sort of capacity offset these unforeseen expenses. What is your suggestion for people like myself? I have a couple of questions. Where will this money, this cost savings of cutting the retiree healthcare go? Will it be used to pay the firefighters that are suing the city for racial discrimination? Will it pay for the raise for the mayor? Will it go back into the healthcare fund or will it go into the general fund? How about the city sells some assets like the border water and light instead of balancing the budget on the backs of retirees? This action is unethical and immoral. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I have, uh, Julia Hillary next followed by, uh. Give me a second. Try to Sarah Morrison.
Hi, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Julia Hillary. Some of you may have known me as Officer Julie. I work for Lansing Police Department. I also retired, um, with an injury in 2004. And. Just a couple of things. I just want to, first of all, I'm not, there's two different things that are being affected here. You have retirees under 65. And you have the retirees that are over 65. Now, the retirees over 65 are, are being forced into a new ins- uh, insurance plan that. We've been being told for a month, month and a half that we get these answers. It's always in two weeks and two weeks and two weeks. And we're at the end of October and we still don't know anything. They still don't know anything. Now me, I'm not 65 yet, so I will tell you what's going to happen with me. I currently pay $10 for every doctor's visit that I go to. And due to me having four herniated discs that came from the police department. And I left with a broken ankle. Uh, I have ongoing health issues. So now every vi- visit I go to is going to cost me $30 instead of $10. That's a 300% or 200% increase. When it comes to. Medications, I currently pay $5 for a medication that i- and most of mine are generic that I get. So $5, that $5 is now going to go to $20. So, I mean, if you can tell just with a, a visit plus medication, that greatly increases the cost. Now, the problem that I have, Mr. Shore, is the fact that. You know, we, we keep calling this a backhanded deal and everything, and we know that this deal is rushed. Because I don't know how many of you city council people have read all the documents that are on the city count, that are on the city, um. Uh, website, but there are plenty of them out there to read. If you haven't read them, you should, because it kind of tells a story. See, the mayor put out RFPs and got three in one week. One week. And that was in 2000 and October of 2019. That's a year ago. So a year ago, he knew he was going to do this. When did we find out about it? In September of this year. When, when, uh, some letters got sent out that probably weren't supposed to be sent out is when we figured, found out about it. Why did it take so long? And honestly, I believe the reason that it took so long is because he did not want. Anybody to be able to fight back about this issue, even though he knew about it a year in advance. Because the longer you wait till the day that everything gets signed and everything else, and I don't know if it's been signed or not. I know my time's up, so I'll just stop at that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next we have Sarah Morrison.
Hi there. I don't know exactly what happened there before. Um, Carol Wood, thank you so much for expressing what so many of us feel. Um, this is going to be a little redundant for those of you that were already at the Ways and Means Committee, but I don't think Mayor Shore was in on it. Um, my name is Sarah Morrison. I'm speaking on behalf of my husband, Chris, who is a disabled Lansing firefighter. We have previously told you of his 26 knee surgeries, two back surgeries, multiple complications, including blood clots, pulmonary embolisms. He almost had his leg amputated. He's been unable to work another job due to the medications that he takes and blood complications that came from all of this. Um, his whole job was protecting the city of Lansing, its residents, its visitors, its employees. He loved what he did. He loved being a medic firefighter. When he was placed on disability by the city, we were given assurances that his damaged health would be taken care of because it happened on the job. They all while, um, bargained through all of the union bargaining, all in good faith, gave up raises, other benefits guaranteed. So that they could have their health taken care of because of the risks that are inherent for firefighters and police officers. Under Mayor Bernero, we suffered a crisis of the Great Recession. Um, a lot of things had to be sacrificed and done. Um, the, he worked with the employees, the unions, the, the city council. He took care of the employees and retirees. You did not do that, Mayor Shore. I'm sorry. This is a pandemic. It's another crisis. Unfortunately, instead of working with the city employees, the unions, the benefit offices, there's a lot of smart people that maybe could have helped resolve and find new ways to do this. Without hurting the most vulnerable in a pandemic who already have pre-existing conditions, who already have a fixed income. The promise you made when you ran for mayor. Your salary is over 136,000. You're going to go to over a 139 next year if that goes through. You're making four times the amount of the average median income of a person that lives in Lansing. Three times more than the average firefighter or police officer, five times more than our oldest retirees, disabled or widows. So tell us, how do you justify giving yourself raises during a time like this? Creating new benefit or new positions that pay people over a hundred grand a year? You tell the news like it's something cheery that we're solving the problems. It's $8 million we're saving. Well, it's not $8 million. It's going right on that legacy cost that's going to be paid over time. Our recommendation is maybe your salary should be cut to what the firefighters and the paramedics make. You should deal with the same insurances. Because the lifestyle change and the cost change that you're burdening us with would then maybe something you would feel and could actually relate to. Um, a lot of our older retirees and widows, they just literally are going to lose three months of their income or more, possibly more. Did you have a contract as a mayor? Because if you did, I'd say that would be now invalid, the same as you've made our contracts. You have another scheduled raise in 2021. I don't think you should take that. In fact, I think you should reduce it. You have the ability to suspend this action in the middle of our benefit year? We don't start over till July 1. Suddenly in the middle of a year, we all now are done in, in.
Thank you. Thank you. Your time is expired. Thank you. And that was, uh, the last speaker that had signed up before, uh, we called, so.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Uh, thank you, everyone, for your comments this evening. Uh, with no further business for Lansing City Council at 10:02 PM, we are adjourned.